We're going to get the meeting started. Welcome to the Issaquah City Council Land and Shore Committee, June 7th meeting. Welcome, everybody. On the agenda tonight, we have on the screen, Moratorium Update, Agenda Bill 7316, Sustainable Building Action Strategy, AB 7326, Old Town Subarea Plan Update, AB 7312, Regional Agenda, and the Central Issaquah Dashboard. We do have an agenda change. Item D, the Regional Agenda, we are going to defer until next month because we're waiting for some materials. So we will go ahead and get started with the Moratorium Update.
Thank you. And I noticed we have 45 minutes scheduled for this agenda item. I'm going to take just a few minutes here at the beginning to give you guys kind of an update of all the projects. And then most of this time will be spent on the parking study because that has gotten to a point where we're ready to share some information. So we've updated our project calendar, and if any of you would like a hard copy of this, I can give you a hard copy this evening.
Thank you.
And I did watch the council meeting on the 5th, and there was some conversations about these work items. And Councilmember Polly made an ask, and that ask was that the calendar reflect both the current timeline and the prior timeline. And so I wanted to unpack that a little bit since I'm actually here and not just watching it from a hotel room. So are you just interested in how the endpoint changed or all the touchpoints?
For me, it was more about the endpoint to understand what we had originally thought we could do and then where we end up.
Okay. That's awesome. I just needed to know what level of detail you were looking for. So this document that's in front of you, and I can put it up if we're going to go through it, that's up to you. It has all six work items, and we included the end of the development agreements just because that's another kind of significant work item with a number of public touchpoints. So that's on here even though this is a moratorium work calendar. We've got one kind of infiltrator. Two? Oh, an old town. Apparently, this has turned into a Development Services Department major work effort calendar. So there's seven things on here. If you want to ask any questions, I'm glad to go through any of them. I can put the calendar up if you want. I think I have the technology, know how to do that. But if not, then I will, we will get you that information on the revisions so you have a sense for how the timelines might be stretching a little bit for some of the projects.
Is the moratorium expiration date on this calendar?
So that's not on this calendar. That would be a great thing to add to this calendar. It's, we are, the next hearing on the six-month extension, so I did watch that conversation. I believe the right answer is it does end in October, and you have to have the hearing before it comes to term, which is why it's scheduled for September 6th. So...
It's a Wednesday. Oh, is that after Labor Day?
It's after Labor Day. So it's actually the 5th.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is it the 6th?
No, it's the 5th.
It's the 5th. Yeah. It's the 5th. Apparently, UVDC won't be that night.
I've been there.
Okay. So I'll populate the calendar with the hearing extension.
I think a couple of things would be helpful. One is the hearing on the moratorium, and then the other is the actual expiration date. But on the hearing, it might be helpful to footnote the calendar to just quickly list that, the options that council could end the moratorium in October, council could extend it, whatever, just so people aren't looking at it thinking, "That's it? It's over in October."
You guys need some time to think about those choices because they're, it's not going to be easy. They're not all going to be done on September 5th. So it's where are they and what are your choices? So we'll try and work through that with you guys because I know you've talked about, could we lift it for parts of this? And I think staff need to talk through that a little bit more too because that's really complicated, given that the visions is the last thing to get over the goal line.
Do you have any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much. If you need that, I know how to use it.
Good. So I'm going to do just a very brief introduction of this moratorium work plan item. Predominantly, the presentations will be by our consultant team.
We don't have a separate item on the agenda for this. This is under the update, and it includes parking draft, information about the parking studies that have been done, right?
Right. So basically, the purpose of tonight is to introduce that information. So we're considering this part of our update. That's why it was so long. And then getting feedback from this council committee to then feed into code amendments, drafting of code amendments. So as we've discussed, September 6th was when the moratorium was passed. Parking was one of the items. There were two questions, and in March, we hired Farron Peers and their subconsultants, Eco Northwest, to help us answer those questions. Part of this was generated from the Central Issaquah evaluation last summer in which we saw that all the residential projects had structured parking, but only one of the commercial projects had. As part of this work item, staff analyzed a series of projects just to see how much structured parking was already occurring. And we saw that from 0 to 93% of six office projects had structured parking, up to 25% of four retail projects had structured project, structured parking, and then between 30 and 100% of 14 residential projects had structured parking, or their parking was structured. And part of the reason why parking is coming first and the importance of this discussion is that there are impacts to other moratorium work plan items. We're not asking to address those now, but by settling the, or getting direction on how we're going to handle those two things will impact architectural fit, urban design, vertical mixed use, et cetera. So our next steps are, tonight, we're going to give you the research and hope to talk about the policy considerations and administration's recommendations. Then staff and the consultant team will work on code amendments. We are currently scheduled for a hearing at PPC on June 22nd, return to land and shore the beginning of July, and have currently scheduled council adoption of those amendments on July 17th. Okay. That's it for the introduction.
So thank you for having us tonight. My name is Chris Brayland. I am a principal traffic engineer at Farron Peers, and we're the prime consultant on this study. I have with me Daniel Dye, who's a traffic engineer and planner as well. We're going to talk about some of the parking data collection and observations we have, and then we're going to turn it over to Morgan to talk a little bit about the sort of land use economic impacts of different parking regulations for our study. As Lucy pointed out, we are at least sort of presenting some of the initial data collections and some of the conclusions that we've drawn thus far. And our sort of piece is really, in a nutshell, is Issaquah's standards, are they right parked? And the purpose being that our focus is on residential parking requirements, and are those residential parking requirements appropriate for the city of Issaquah with the idea of providing not too much, not too little, kind of the Goldilocks of parking for the city, especially with an eye looking for what does Central Issaquah want to transition into? So we have that lens in place to know that the city's got a vision, and we're looking at the parking regulations from that perspective. So to kind of walk through, Daniel's going to step through the data collection that we have done so far, and we're going to go pretty quick. There's a lot of detail in the report that we can pause and see if there's any questions after we finish up. We did an audit of a couple of in-progress projects and how they're parked and what we think will come from that. And then I'll step back in and sort of sum up with what are our overall conclusions and where might we go from here. So Daniel?
So the first thing we're going to talk about is kind of how the data collection worked. So we've got data collection from a couple of different sources, or three different sources. One is 2012 and 2017 right-size parking from King County Metro. I'll explain a little bit more about what that is in just a minute. We've got a couple of field visits, looking at parking around Atlas Apartments, and then we've got parking regulations in other cities. We kind of did a review of what regulations look like in other municipalities similar to Issaquah. So right-size parking data is from King County Metro. They had a major project in 2012 that they're updating now to ascertain what's the right amount of parking at multifamily developments. When they collected that data in 2012, there was, the overall across the entire county, there was about 40% of parking that was just going unutilized. It's just empty spaces every night that, you know, are really maybe not the best use of land for multifamily housing. We could maybe, you know, put more housing, put more landscaping as opposed to paving parking. They collected their data in a couple of different ways. They used surveys, both from project managers to get information like rent, number of units, all kinds of information on what they're charging for parking, how their parking works, as well as going out in the middle of the night with the property owner's permission to go and look and count how many people are actually parking there. It's really kind of a gold standard in how to collect this kind of data because you get not only the information from the property manager, but you get the information from what's actually happening on the ground, how many people are parked there overnight, which is the highest amount of time. There were 240 sites in 2012. Three of those were in Issaquah. And then in 2017, they've just started their data collection, but we were able to get three new sites in Issaquah from King County Metro before we embarked on, as part of this. Here's a map of just all the different sites that we selected for review for the 2012 parking data. As you can see, they're primarily east side, some kind of cities that are somewhat similar to Issaquah, and, you know, being not quite in the middle of Seattle, but kind of some different characteristics. Some of them are more transit-rich, some of them are a little bit further away. From the three sites that were collected in 2017 in Issaquah, we saw three different parking utilizations. The two on the bottom are about 1.14 stalls per occupied unit. So what we really wanted to look at is not only how much parking is being used, but how much parking is being used in comparison with how many units are occupied. With Site 1, Atlas, they're only at 54% occupancy, but they're only at 43% parking utilization right now. So they're, they've actually got a little bit more parking supply than they actually need as of right now, and we expect that to continue as more of their building is filled up with tenants. The two other sites are at about a 1.14 parking ratio. They're, you know, a little bit fuller on parking, but they're still, they've got a little bit of extra space for additional people to park. Paired with the observations from King County Metro with their data collection, we also went and looked at the parking around the Atlas Development, kind of as an emblem of it's kind of the new mixed-use developments in Central Issaquah. We found that almost all of the on-street parking stalls were used, but that was despite the fact that there were 25 or so stalls of their surface parking lot that was open. And then there were also, there's a great amount of space in their parking garage underneath the buildings that are unused. And that surface parking is actually free to residents, so it's not even so much an issue of whether they're paying for underbuilding garage parking versus parking on the street. It's an issue of, okay, if I park on the street, I'm right next to my building versus if I park in the surface lot, I might be a little bit further away from the front door of my apartment. It's also very easy to quickly ascertain if there's an on-street parking because they're driving in past the on-street to get there.
Question? That observation on the street as opposed to the free parking onsite because of proximity, is that your own interpretation or did you talk to people?
We also talked to the developer and got their kind of management experience with opening the new, with the new, with the new buildings. He said there's basically, he has two types of customers as far as his renters, from what he's observed. You've got the, you know, "I want to have a sign spot that I pay for, that I know will be there for me." Those types of people are going to pay to park underneath the building. And then you've got the more, "I just want a free spot as close to my front door as I can get it." And that was his observation, was that people are parking on the street despite the, or despite the surface lot parking, just because it's closer and more convenient to their front door.
Well, just one thing. Atlas has hang tags to be able to park on the surface. When we were out there, all but a couple of the vehicles on-street were, had hang tags on those.
Yeah. And every apartment is given that hang tag, so you can very easily tell whether they're an Atlas resident or not, so. We've got a couple of, as part of this, we also looked at kind of some in-progress projects. We've got Vell Apartments, which is just a catty corner, kitty corner with Atlas Apartments. And then we also have the Inniswood Apartments, kind of two multifamily units over at the intersection of Juniper and Newport Way. And there's just their, what you call it, their site plans. They've got pretty structured parking. We did just a brief overview of what is the parking like in currently, what's currently utilized, and what do we expect to happen at Vell and Inniswood when they're completed? At Vell, they actually met or just barely exceeded their parking requirements. I know there was some concern from, they took an EV, an electric vehicle, charging credit so that they reduced their number of required parking stalls. But they do also have 24 tandem spaces, which kind of add to, or 24 tandem stalls, which adds parking, but was not counted as part of their requirements. We expect the utilization, since it's right across the street from Atlas, we expect the utilization to be very similar to that. It's, you know, exactly the same spot geographically. It's the same access to transit and everything. And we do expect that there will still be high-on-street utilization around Vell just because, like we said, sometimes people park there because it's convenient, not because of price or anything. At Inniswood, they actually built at a higher parking ratio, and we think that is somewhat indicative of the fact that the developer sees that there's not much on-street availability right in front of Inniswood. You'd have to, there's a little bit on Juniper possibly, a few stalls of on-street, but not very much. So there, we expect that everybody will be able to very easily park within the, or within the structured parking at Inniswood.
So what we wanted to do is just, that was a lot of information, and we condensed a lot there quickly. In general, what we want to do is sort of, what are high-level conclusions? Based on the right-size parking data evaluation and looking at other cities' regulations, we feel that Central Issaquah's parking minimums are generally appropriate when you look at where's the demand sit right now for Central Issaquah? How does it compare to peer cities? How do peer cities' parking regulations stack up? We don't see them as being unusually low, for example, or unusually high in the area. We're seeing developers build just a smidge over the minimum, which is sort of an indication that the minimum is likely in line with the market demand. But what we also tend to see is that, over the decades, parking demand has tended to drift downwards at multifamily developments. We don't see that trend abating anytime soon. So as they're building near the minimum today, in 15, 20 years, it's likely those buildings will be slightly overparked as people tend to own fewer vehicles over time. One thing that's unique about, in my opinion, in looking at a lot of the different communities around here, the parking spillover risks of development in Central Issaquah is lower than what we see compared to a lot of other communities. We recently did a study very similar to this in downtown Kirkland. Kirkland downtown sits right up against and has sort of permeability to the neighborhoods around it. So people tend to spill up into the neighborhoods. It's mostly commercial parking, not residential. But that sort of permeability leads itself to people getting very concerned about parking. Central Issaquah, the neighborhoods are, tend to be high up. There's, they tend to be separated both topographically and from the street grid connection. The Old Town interface is definitely one area where we could see that being an issue. But when you look at Central Issaquah as a broad area, it's a little bit more isolated than we see in other east side sort of downtown areas. So because of that, we don't necessarily recommend sort of ringing Central Issaquah with higher minimums to deal with the, sort of the scare or threat of parking spillover. One thing to note is that when we talked to Atlas, the developer, he said that they would have developed less parking onsite if the minimums were lower because they could have taken advantage of the parking available at the Safeway site and across the street. But if the minimum's going to require him to build that much parking, he's going to build it, and then he's going to try to get as much use out of it as possible. If the minimums were lower, he would have looked for a, an agreement that doesn't encumber his title or Safeway, the landowner's title over there, to do some more creative parking sharing and reduce the amount he spent on parking. So that's something that could be considered, but I would be careful about where you choose to implement that. And the last thing that we wanted to mention is that we expect, as more development occurs in Central Issaquah, be it residential or non-residential, the demand for on-street parking utilization will grow because it is the most convenient parking except for strip retail, where the buildings are way away from the street. So we expect more on-street parking utilization, so the streets will look a lot fuller even if the parking lots behind them are not that full. That's very indicative of what we're seeing with just the couple examples we have today. So Lucy, did we want to get questions now or?
Yeah.
Yeah. So in your report, in your, you recorded your conversation with the building manager at Atlas, and when the last bullet part talked about the shared parking, and you just addressed it a moment ago. There's an interesting comment in there, over in the last sentence, says, "The developer suggested that current requirements of shared parking for perpetual leases of space within a radius of the site are too burdensome, and it is simpler just to develop all parking onsite." Could you, I don't, I'm not sure I understand. So what's burdensome about it?
Sure. So, and this is, we've, Bellevue has this requirement. I think Redmond has this requirement. And we've talked to developers in these different communities. They all say something very similar. The largest burden on that is that you have to get your neighbor to put a encumbrance on their title for you to have access to their parking, which most people are unwilling to do because then it's difficult for that property owner to get a loan or whatever, redevelop their land. So that transaction, the encumbrance on the land, makes it difficult for that sharing to occur. And it can also sometimes complicate a loan process for the owner of the site in that your development's success is contingent on you striking some deal with a neighbor. Sometimes lenders don't want to handle that. I'm sure Morgan could probably speak to those sorts of issues as well.
So just the, so I found that in conflict of the earlier part of the same bullet point, where the person you spoke with suggested that regulations could better encourage shared parking by reducing the parking minimum. So it's like, you know what? Reduce the minimums, and we're more likely to do shared. But by the way, shared is way too burdensome. So I didn't understand.
Yeah. So here's, here's the, here's how it works out, is the minimums say that you have to have access to, let's say, one space per dwelling unit. And you can do it either on your site, or you can do it via perpetual lease on somebody else's site. What the developer's point is that if we set the minimum was lower, and you can pick any number, and you can put all these caveats, if, lower if it's in a structure, lower if it's not, whatever. If you set the minimum lower, he doesn't want to build less parking than the market has for, because then he's left with vacant apartment units which cost a huge amount of money. So he's going to right-size his parking, and if Safeway has parking across the street that he can lease, but without the perpetual agreement and the lien on the property, then he will do that ad hoc to make sure that he can rent his apartments. But the only way he can do that is to remove, reduce the parking minimum to below, below market essentially, kind of that, at that point, you encourage these ad hoc sharing arrangements was his, was his point.
Okay. So what I think I just heard is that the lease versus a perpetual change is preferred.
The lease is a burdensome action that rare, so a lot of cities have that, but almost no developers take advantage of that shared parking when it has the encumbrance on the title.
Okay.
And so I just want to add to this because we've recognized for many years that the way the shared parking is written in our code is unlikely to be implemented for all the reasons Chris said. We haven't figured, we had, we didn't know what the alternative was. So we left it in there as a tool. It was an option, but we didn't really expect people to take advantage of it. I think one of the other options that we had heard was you could lower the minimums or you could leave it to a more market-based solution, which is that you keep the minimums where they are, but allow share, without having to record on title, then property owners will seek out people with perceived or complementary parking cycles to supplement it until, as the parking needs keep dropping, assuming the trends continue, then they can lease that surplus. Since we say there's 75% parking lots in Central Issaquah, is there a way to take advantage of that? Well, not if we're going to require a notice on title because it's going to interfere with redevelopment, but maybe if we let the market drive that for as long as it's needed.
Right.
So there are a couple of questions. So Atlas currently right now is 50% occupied, but the street parking adjacent to it is full. So when it is completely occupied, does that then lead to the potential that on-street parking could creep further into other neighborhoods around it?
I think the, that, I'm going to have to caveat this to say that it's going to be my educated guess on this, but I don't think that's terribly likely to happen. I think it might expand slightly. But the reason why on-street is full is because it's very convenient to walk from your car to your front door in that instance. And as the apartments tend to fill up, if people are walking further away, they are losing the benefit of the on-street when you consider the fact that they can park in the surface lot for free, or you can pay the fee within the garage to park. And one of the interesting things we noted when talking to the developer is that since he has that parking built, he wants to get revenue out of it. Otherwise, it does nothing for him. So he's going to try to sort of work with the rates on the parking leases, which are completely separate from the apartment leases, to try to get that fuller. So I don't think that it's likely to spread greatly because there's, all indications point to there's more parking available on the site than will ever be demanded even at full occupancy of Atlas.
Good answer. So the second part for me is the two projects that you examined do not necessarily have single-family neighborhoods adjacent to them. However, there are areas where Central Issaquah on the valley floor butts up to a different subarea that has single-family residential or multifamily. So in that area, it's entirely possible that if somebody builds at that edge of Central Issaquah, that it could creep. So do you recommend any code language or any policy language that has to do with those transitions where it's a Central Issaquah boundary next to a single-family or a low-density multifamily?
So there, and indeed, there are a couple of those boundaries. There are not a lot of them, and that was sort of my general statement, that it's not completely prevalent. My recommendation on that would be more towards not necessarily changing the parking requirements, but sort of the city council might need to take some sort of stance as to who does that on-street parking sort of, who has priority use? So it's more of an on-street parking management piece because what we've shown is that even if you increase the minimums for Central Issaquah, if the parking is convenient, the way that the buildings are oriented against the street, they'll use it anyway. So that wouldn't actually address the issue. It's, we know it's going to come, so it's sort of, at those border areas, how do you want to address the management of on-street parking between Central Issaquah and the bordering neighborhood?
So I guess my question would be, I currently do not support changing the minimums, but I feel like there's a gap in our current standards or policy language dealing with those boundaries. Is that something you address in either the policy or the code in Central Issaquah? Because it's not addressed in your report, but I feel like it's a gap. How would you fill that gap to deal with that?
Right. And so we had kind of worked with sort of Keith and Lucy about, you know, how much do we sort of push towards recommending a bunch of policies or whatnot? I think that it, and be it part of the Central Issaquah sort of policies or sort of a, sort of a step up on sort of a citywide policy of how do you deal with these transition areas, I think there's, there might be some policy guidance, and there's examples of, for, you know, for example- of, for, you know, for example, in Bellevue, they downtown policies state that downtown development shall not flood, I'm paraphrasing, shall not flood the neighborhoods with a bunch of parking spillover. So it's a downtown policy that has repercussions in terms of the city's residential parking program, zone permits that they set up that are sort of implemented outside of downtown, but it's in a downtown policy basis. And they, over the years, had since broadened that to talk about other generators, but that's an example. There's many other ways that that could be addressed.
Great, thanks.
We, we have more information if you want to talk about that.
Oh, yeah, I will ask for more information. Thanks, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Hello. Council members, it's a pleasure to be back in front of you guys again. So our responsibility as part of this project was not so much to weigh in on sort of the impact of different sort of minimum configurations, but more to sort of provide some information analysis around the sort of urban form, urban design implications around the cities.
Make sure you introduce yourself, Morgan.
Cities' desire to see parking treated in, in a more sort of urban fashion, particularly through its structured parking requirements. Oh, I should introduce myself, is what you're asking. Okay, sorry. I took too much liberty with the fact that people knew me. But yeah, I'm Morgan Shuck. I'm a director at Eco Northwest. Eco Northwest is a economics planning and finance firm and we've been engaged in various projects with the city over the last decade. So probably a little too familiar with folks. So our questions were really looking at sort of providing some information and guidance regarding how to treat parking, not so much to weigh in on sort of what the aggregate requirements for the amount of parking would be. And so we wanted to do some analysis, particularly, I think the guidance here is to understand sort of the economic impact and how sort of differential treatment with regard to structured parking would have on sort of the feasibility of projects or the sort of different preference for projects. And then to sort of do a little work on sort of what guidance could we give around how the cities can and should sort of regulate structured parking. Before I dive into that too much, I just want to kind of give some sort of big picture sort of axioms when it comes to sort of econ, land, land development and parking. Parking drives everything for all the reasons that Chris articulated earlier, right? That there's, this is a sort of, think about it as a cost on a project, right? It's really hard to make money as a sort of highest and best use of parking and you're really sort of trying to cross-subsidize a lot of ways, the sort of primary use, whether it be residential, retail, office, to support the sort of needed parking and mobility needs of that particular use. And so everyone is trying to be as efficient as possible and so thinking, and this really is, the biggest impact is mostly in the aggregate, the minimums, or like how much are you requiring that is above marketplace? So we don't really see that here based on Chris's analysis. And so the question, this one is more secondary about sort of the treatment of it regarding sort of being structured. So a couple sort of big picture pieces here. So, you know, we've been in front of you before and trying to explain sort of what we see is happening in the sort of real estate development sort of world, particularly in Central Issaquah, right? You're making this sort of pivot from sort of suburban, commercial vehicles or oriented place to sort of a, an environment here where the land is really valuable. It's valuable to residential uses, it's valuable to other commercial uses and people really want to sort of maximize that value. So we see higher intensities of development, right? More dwelling units per acre, more commercial square foot rate, more retail, you know, greater utilization in the land in terms of structure. And so that trend is likely to continue in the sense that people really want to treat parking as efficiently as possible. And in terms of urban form, that usually means being some type of structure, right? You really want to put that parking in a place that sort of serves two purposes, the foundation of the project for some vertical sort of development. And so you're in, on that track and you see that in the data that Lucy and Keith have put together around what the projects are performing with regards to structure. So the key issue here is really definitional, sort of in terms of what one means by structured parking. And the definition here in the code is really that the parking is a thin floor, some walls and a roof, right? And how that plays out on any given kind of development is a little different, both in terms of who the primary users are going to be and more importantly, the cost to construct that stuff. So on the top there, we've got tuck-under and underbuilding and these are based on a couple of projects that are kind of getting built right now. And so what they're really trying to do here is take advantage of the slope, but they're really providing the parking as part of the structure itself. And what's also happening here is the type of construction typically wood frame, which is an order of magnitude cheaper than steel and construction type of project. So you're, it's really, it's much more, it's easier to sort of bundle the parking as part of the project in this type of project. You have two things working for you as we've got a lot of slope and the construction type. I will leave underground off the table for the time being, but I'll direct you here to sort of projects you're seeing here, what we call, we'll call them shared structured parking. But particularly the type of, construction type is steel and concrete. It serves as sort of the podium or foundation of a building for more vertical product type. And obviously you can have hybrids between these two, but that typically that's how the parking is sort of structured. The big, big change here is really in construction type. Most of that is, most of that parking is going to be housed in concrete and steel. And so you're talking, you know, it, the sort of wood frame construction, you know, $7,000, you know, a stall versus, you know, $35,000 a stall. So you can kind of see the big orders of magnitude. We left underground. Underground is probably the most expensive form of, of structured parking typically in the sort of $60,000 a stall because you have huge excavation costs and huge construction costs around being in the ground. And here we also, we know there are issues related to the sort of the water table here that can make this even trickier to pull off in Central Issaquah. We also sort of have another version of structured parking, which is just a simple deck, right? It's basically the primary use is parking and you see this in some of the commercial products, particularly it's sort of at Costco and the medical office, institutional uses that are really trying to still be efficient, but the, the economics there are always a little different for sort of, for, for those folks. So what we wanted to do is test sort of how sensitive different rates of structured parking are with regards to financial performance, just to give you a sense. And so we're plugging in current parking policies, current prices for land and rents to give us some sense of sort of how different differentials. And so as you kind of see up on the top left, we have the tuck, the tuck-under parking for, with, within a sort of structured stick-built townhome, kind of the examples that we've seen, and this is really the most efficient way to handle it and, because it's part of the product, the premiums are there and you can build it pretty efficiently. And so you could require increasingly amounts of it without really, you know, having a real sort of dramatic impact on financial performance. And for the most part, what you're seeing in that kind of product type coming in in Central Issaquah is almost all of it being within a structure. So, you know, so you see the economics aligned with a little bit of the urban design desire from the city. The second one here we've got is sort of the sort of structured parking in a sort of residential podium. So on the far left is, imagine you could park it all on a surface, right? You know, probably not actually what you would want to do, but if you could, you know, pretty, pretty great. But because you're really trying to get more intensity out of the use of the land, you're typically wanting to sort of build that as part of a podium project. So Atlas and some of the other projects are good examples of this. And, you know, given kind of where we think current rates are, right? You're really kind of at about that 50% range. Higher levels of required parking probably are outside of sort of the market's ability to bear that type of stuff. So, and this fits in with some of the work we've done with the mixed use and talking to developers. The marketplace is still trying to treat parking as efficiently as possible because the premiums just aren't there at least to derive much revenue out of it. And so you're really cross-subsidizing the sort of the housing component with the parking component. We looked at retail and office here, parking with separate decks, just to give you some sense here what happens versus if you could surface park it versus putting some of it in a deck. And here, your parking costs are, are orders of magnitude a little bigger versus sort of surface parking because not only are you doing concrete and steel, but you're doing multiple levels of, of the stuff to accommodate sort of your demand. What we're seeing, right, but particularly in office is for the institutional users, I mean, they're parking at, you know, 50, you know, percent, I mean, but, you know, those are also sort of different kinds of users, but it gives you some sense of sort of where the, where the, where the office market is though. I mean, there's some value in sort of suburban sort of locations, but they have their parking needs, they're willing to accommodate that in a very sort of intense fashion. But still dramatic sort of impact with regards to higher requirements for, for that parking to be in the structure. Similar, we see that in retail. And here, the, the issue is really where the retail productivity is and where the retail market is, there's still a high amount of sort of auto orientation to it and a huge amount of sort of reliance on that. So more requirements to sort of park it, you know, at, in structures has dramatic impact. And so what happens in both these cases is if you're a developer in either the retail or the office environment, there are huge economies of scale. So I think examples like what you saw, what you saw in the, in the Highlands, right? You've got basically a deck that's shared sort of retail parking that serves a lot of these places because they can accommodate that. There's, they desire to be efficient, to bring the retail in. If you were sort of an individual retail small place, you probably couldn't be able to sort of either functionally or financially sort of park your structure, you know? So just some sense in sort of terms of, you know, the scale of the retail. So, so, so what do we, what are the kind of sort of the implications here? So, so when we think about sort of structured parking requirements, we've got to think about the type of form, right? So what the zoning is intended to do, what types of building form we're, you're trying to place within different sub-areas of the Central Issaquah area. We want to think about structured parking in a way that sort of matches sort of parking minimums and kind of where the marketplace is, but at the same time reinforce the broader sort of urban design goals that the city has laid out. But also, maybe also think about some flexibility because the sort of idiosyncratic nature of sort of site configurations, ability to leverage other sort of parking arrangements will have some sort of marginal impact. So, but there are also, you know, some precedent, right, for cities to regulate structured parking. And I think this is, not every city does it, but some cities do because particularly, I think in the sort of Central Issaquah place, setting where you have suburban environments that are trying to move to it and you're signaling some sort of expectation for the type of form you have. And in those places, it's, the tools are kind of wielded, I think, in a very nuanced form, right? Basically, they want to think about location, they want to think about the type of use and also maybe thinking about some administrative or policy relief for those things if they sort of comport with other sort of community objectives. So after having conversation with our team and talking it, talking about it, it seemed to be there's a principle here that the city wants to sort of maintain the ground. They've already sort of covered in terms of the development and continuing to signal that we want urban design to look a certain way. We want to sort of treat the parking in a way that works for the site, but also works for the community. And so regulating parking in this fashion isn't necessarily, you know, a sort of detrimental piece, particularly given sort of some of these potential sort of places in terms of where residential, where office would land, they're right about kind of where you're thinking the market is performing. And so you're really kind of saying, we don't, we're not, we don't want the market to retreat from this with regard to sort of how we're treating structured parking. With that, I think I'll end and open some questions for you guys.
Do I have any?
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did you get what you want from us?
So, so the next step is to go draft some code language. So, so we're, you know, just to make sure what you're seeing here is, you know, some, right now there's a zero requirement for structured parking and we're going to push it for both office and residential based on the tolerances that we've seen in existence in recent projects. We, we think that that's something we can achieve. And so if you guys are at least feeling like that's okay to move that conversation forward to PPC, we'll, we'll go ahead and do that. In terms of the work that Farron Pierce did, you know, I think what we found was we heard one suggestion from Councilmember Polly on, you know, what happens around the perimeter and, and where there might be spillover into residential areas, how might we be able to think about that? But the, the general conclusion that came out of that was based on the data and the observations, we think that the standards are, are fine. And so as long as you guys are cool with that, then yeah, we're ready to go do the next step.
So I thought what I would do is allow for public comment briefly.
Great.
And then committee members can make comments for feedback. So do we have anybody here from the public that would like to make comments? David?
Thank you, David Kapler. I, I don't have a disagreement with the findings there, but there's a couple of issues I think that could change how parking works here. One is, yeah, we're a long ways away from light rail getting to Issaquah, but we are going to be dragging people from all of these areas around Issaquah who will want to get the best bus service to Seattle and Bellevue. And how we deal, that is the complication. You don't drive to downtown Kirkland and park all day on the street there so you can get a bus to Seattle, but you can park right here and get the 554 before it fills up at the park, at the, at the, at the parking lot or the, the big structure down the way. But, so I think that's a component that we have to recognize. The other one is parking enforcement. I think we're, we're behind on that. I've joked with the mayor, not completely joking, to get the biggest, ugliest Winnebago I can find and park it across the street from here for 71 hours and 59 minutes, move it 10 feet or, and do the same thing. The only parking enforcement really in Issaquah, I think, is red, red curb, fire, fire lanes and somebody's really blocking traffic perhaps, but, you know, there's, we, it maybe is time to have a parking enforcement officer for the city of Issaquah to deal with that because it's going to become more of a problem that will complicate the, the parking and the need for parking. Thank you.
Thank you.
Justin Walsh, 2196 Schibber Way. You know, I agree with David, we're probably not there yet, but I think it's something to keep on the horizon with parking enforcement regarding Councilmember Polly's comment on bleed over as we start to look at on-street parking. One thing to keep in mind is that we do have a very easy enforcement mechanism once we do have parking enforcement to create zone parking in those adjacent areas, which would be an easy, simple, low-cost solution to do that. Thank you.
Anybody else? Kristi?
Good evening. I'm Kristi Tripple and with Raleigh Properties at 1595 Northwest Gilman Boulevard. And I would agree that parking enforcement and some regulations are really important to start putting in place now. I know that complicates things a little bit more and probably involves a lot more community dialogue, but there are a lot of things that are happening now, for example, that the code enforcer or police don't have an opportunity to enforce. One example is on Mall Street, there's a business that's a rental business and they use on-street parking to store their food trucks or large equipment and it actually blocks line of sight for other businesses. And there's kid-friendly businesses in the area and there's no tools to kind of enforce that. So I think that's one example. There's many others that I think happen throughout the city. So I think that helps to start looking at that now. And it also helps with the notion of structured parking, making sure that we're using it efficiently. And it also helps with the notion of structured parking, making sure that we're using it efficiently and taking land values in consideration as well because as those increase, obviously developers are going to want to use the highest and best use of the land and right-size park their projects. I think the other part that is important is to provide some tools for businesses. So the Parking Benefit Improvement District Tool, I think, is a really good one, or Low Impact Development, because it allows the neighborhood to work together and be creative in the use of space because we all know that technology is changing, the way we use cars and multi-modal options. There's a lot of things that we don't know are going to be the case in 10, 20, 30 years. So I think allowing for that shift in the market is important. And then I think the last thing, just lost my train of thought. It was important. I'll have to get back to you on that. But I think having to, oh, the, sorry, I didn't come prepared to make public comment tonight. I will also say, just given our own experience and gratefully, we, Raleigh Properties owns their neighborhoods and has really good relationships with the banks, but it is difficult when you have a shared parking district to record on title. And anytime you go to get a loan or make a change, it really takes a lot of time and effort and education. Frankly, one, because banks aren't still looking at Issaquah as a more urban market, so they don't understand it. But it also is an issue of if there's a lien on the property and we want to make a change or we have to recall as a bank that property, makes their lives a lot more difficult. So I think the more that we can make parking tools, enforcement, and usage of the land easier, I think the way better off you're going to be in achieving the vision of the Central Issaquah Plan. So thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Wanting to speak? Okay. Thank you.
Sure. First, about the task or assignment that you were working on, which is specifically the two consultants' reports that were presented, and that it's one of our moratorium work items. I thought the information in both reports was awesome, really great, really thorough. And the aspects that I liked about them was that they compiled data on existing projects that we have, projects in the pipeline, and they also gave us that regional context of our neighbors that are similar. And you have heard us ask for that so many times, and these reports were so helpful and so easy to understand. At this time, I think, I actually, I do, I totally agree with staff's, and consultants' and staff's recommendation that reducing the parking minimums at this time is not necessary. I also agree with the structured parking changes that we're here. I guess a couple of things that were outside of your scope of work that I want to make comments on as well is that I do think, well, actually, this one's not, I do think we need to have some sort of policy or code language that talks about the edges now, rather than when the first project comes in that's adjacent to an existing low-density or single-family development. I think we need to get ahead of the curve on that. And I think that outside of the scope of your work, parking enforcement needs to be done now. I think that's something that the council is just about to enter into their budget season, and a couple of things we can do is we can at least put that on the table, or one of us can recommend to put that on the table. I think we have issues around the existing park and rides now, and I think we need to address that, especially as congestion in this region does not seem to be diminishing, it's only increasing, so let's get ahead of the curve on that. And I think the last thing was that Kristi Triple's comments about parking improvement districts and also the fact that we have these restrictive agreements or covenants that need to be registered on someone else's parking for shared parking, I consider those to be policy adjustments that while they're not the part of your scope of work this evening, I think I'd like to see on the docket of comprehensive plan amendment adjustments for next year. And that also goes with whatever we would do with parking enforcement. Budget piece of the parking enforcement really is if we're going to address it from a code amendment and a staffing position, it'd be good for staff to be thinking about that now, so feed that into the early budget discussions that are happening this summer. Otherwise, I just love that, the two reports. I thought they were great, really helpful.
I have a question. So this slide that's still up here, how do we get to these recommendations? How do you get to 33%? How do we get to 33% of residential and office and no for retail?
Well, I mean, we would write code language that would just require that.
Oh, no, I mean, how did you get to this recommendation?
Oh, how did we get to this?
Survey of recent projects.
Right.
Showed a tolerance level?
So in combination with the work that Eco Northwest did, so looking at the points, you know, they are doing it at 25 and 50%, and is kind of where we were seeing the balance point in their work. And we were comparing that to what the data that we were getting from projects on the ground in Issaquah. And so between those two pieces or two data sets, we identified, we proposed 33% as a result.
I would have liked to kind of dive into that a little bit more. I'm not sure how you arrived at that. I mean, I hear the words, those are very concrete numbers, and I didn't hear in the presentation or see in this analysis how you drive toward that, why we think that that is the best number. And I just heard what you said in terms of, you did analysis, I didn't.
So I think.
So maybe not now. I know we're going to do this a little bit more, but as a follow-up, but, because that slide basically said, here's some, let's do some policy that helps us achieve this. And I don't understand the recommendation completely, so that's what I'd like to do.
We can pull that apart. I hear what you're asking.
Thank you.
Any comments? Staff? So I largely agree with the comments that Marilyn made, and I don't really need to repeat all of them. Just plus one on everything she said, I think the reports were, and the presentations were very, very thorough, and the recommendations were supported by a lot of information and data, a lot of facts, which is what we like. I agree with Paul that connecting that last dot, connecting those last two dots is great. And I agree, parking enforcement, you know, it's, I've been thinking for three or four years that we need to start looking at that. It's a problem in the Highlands, and it's a problem in other areas of the city, it's a problem downtown, where people are hopping buses, hopping on buses, or not wanting to park in the parking, in the metro structured parking areas. Yeah.
So we have recommendations from Farron Pierce of, you know, related to this, if we wanted to pursue that. And I think that the council's direction to not try and incorporate that at this time, but pass that information along to be a more substantive policy discussion is a great one because I think it is a little bit more complicated and potentially outside the scope of what we're trying to answer, but it's very much related to the success of all of these parking elements.
Agreed. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a Sustainable Building Action Strategy, right? I have the agenda right in front of me, so.
Forgot.
Yes. Agenda Bill 7316.
Oh, that one.
Oh, that one. Yes.
Okay. I apologize for that delay, just wanted to pull up the presentation. David Fujimoto, the Director of the Office of Sustainability. I'm also joined here tonight by Megan Curtis Murphy, who works in our office, as well as Lexie Ralph, who's a consultant who's been working on this project. She works with the Integral Group. I just want to make a quick note, so there are copies of the strategy as well as the accompanying memo that are over there on the table, if anybody needs a copy. As part of the packet for this agenda bill for 7316, there's a redlined version of the action strategy itself, which incorporates some comments from previous, as well as the second memo, which also incorporates the information from the first memo. So all of that's available for easy reference. And then the new piece that's in there is a proposed resolution. That's a clarifying piece from our clerk's office, just for the process of moving forward, so should we decide to proceed with this. Stepping back a little bit, I just wanted to provide, this slide is a little bit of context for why the city is spending time on this strategy and considering sustainability in the built environment. Through the current moratorium, the city is taking a forward-looking view, if you will, and updating its standards to inform, better inform future development. It's looking at overall objectives to align essentially development with broader community goals. And so overall, the city has done, I think, a pretty good job of preserving and protecting open space and the kind of vast areas that surround the city and are a big part of the city's community and character. But in regards to the built environment, we're looking for better tools to help guide and support development, we're looking for opportunities to reduce impacts associated with development and contribute to successful neighborhoods. We're looking at limitations on infrastructure and how we can address those, and also some more attention to issues such as social equity, which is primarily being addressed, at least at this point in time, through considerations about affordable housing and housing stock overall. But when it really fundamentally comes down to it, sustainable design is about good design, it's about quality building. Sustainable building addresses the performance of the building itself in the built environment, and moratorium is really an opportunity to align several pieces related to the built environment to better reflect those community values. So this is the building performance part of it. There are some relevant pieces which are in the Comprehensive Plan existing for the city of Issaquah, and I'll just note, this is in the Land Use Element Goal G, and this is directly from the Comprehensive Plan, and I'll just read it. It says, "To be a regional leader by incorporating sustainable development, both public and private, to ensure Issaquah's ability to meet future social, economic, and environmental needs through innovative and creative methods. Where possible, the city strives to exceed standards, practices, and methods to ensure Issaquah grows in a sustainable way." And then it goes on and talks about integrating sustainable development criteria, requirements, and development standards into the municipal code to ensure that all projects in the city are required to achieve a minimum level of sustainability. So there's some existing policy foundations for this body of work. So what does the Sustainable Building Strategy address? As you know, sustainable building is a well-known adopted approach, both worldwide, the Northwest in particular, is somewhat of a hotbed and focused on sustainable building. And it's about understanding those interconnections between how we build and the impact of those practices on both our immediate natural environment and the resources we use, as well as on a more regional economy and regional environment basis. And so it's really talking about how we build is not just nice to have, but critically important to the management of our collective resources and our impacts. So the Sustainable Building Strategy addresses this in several key areas, talks about infrastructure and services, water resources, energy, preparation for natural disasters and impacts from climate change, as well as air quality and carbon pollution. Some of the benefits of sustainable building, as outlined in the action strategy, are that they, and they accrue to both the owners and the occupants, as well as the builders. And this is likely a partial list, but it speaks to higher-quality construction. As I said before, sustainable design is about good design, it's not about just adding green features. It's about improved and well-planned amenities, reduced toxics, materials that are sourced locally and designed to have a direct benefit to the local economy. I think Forterra talks about this, when they talk about their laminated plywood or was cross-laminated timber construction, connecting basically urban sustainable building practices to local economies and sourcing wood materials locally. And then Issaquah is also known for its salmon and coconut-bearing streams, and there's measures that will help to protect those as well. And then we also know that local government must also play an increasing role in thinking about greenhouse gas emissions and climate change preparedness. And then there are also measures for how the city can be more proactive in working with development about how we address transportation impacts, both during the kind of design phase but onto occupancy and through the kind of ongoing life of the building. So it's also about expanding options available to the community, aligning interests importantly with partnerships, both with other public sector developers as well as the private I think you've seen this slide before. In short, the strategy itself is about providing an action-oriented roadmap, that's really the purpose here, is to lay out a series of strategies, including leading the way with our own commitment from a municipal standpoint, looking at our internal processes and refining those and building internal capacity, assembling support from both private and public sector partners, again, improving management of transportation, looking at minimum development standards and enhancing those in certain ways, increasing measurement and access to information so that can act as a catalyst to improve building stock. And then it also talks about a more active role in the city for shared approaches to development, and then finally demonstrating incentivizing innovative practices. In the memo that we've distributed as well, there's a variety of comments that are addressed, we're not going to go into those because they're covered pretty well. In the memo, we're happy to answer any questions about those, but they do address a range of comments that have been raised by council and by community members. As I stated, there is a proposed resolution that's included. The pieces are to adopt the strategy, there's also some early actions which are envisioned within the strategy itself, and that also directs the administration to provide a report on progress for at least to make sure that there's that check-in point to see if we need to check and adjust or modify how we're proceeding forward. As I said before, there are several early actions, there's actually five that are incorporated as a part of it. The first one is about the city's own actions, its policy about its buildings and infrastructure. The second two, 1.3 and 5.4, talk about partnerships with the public and private sector, recognizing that there are a number of projects that are planned or underway, and how we can align the standards that we're setting for ourselves in that first policy with other projects that are coming down the pipeline. The third one, 1.4, is a nod to the work that's being done right now and looking at the subarea plan and the standard, the architecture and urban design standards. That's a piece that we're currently looking at and identifying how that can be incorporated into the work being done by Crandall-Rambula. And then this last one, enhanced TDM, or Transportation Demand Management, is really the piece looking at about how we can better manage transportation through occupancy. And with that, we'll take any questions.
Thank you, David. Actually, that last early action that you suggested was on a little bit further, the objective would be to clarify and update applicability of TMAPs, the Transportation Management Action Plans, to address building design and occupancy transportation measures for new construction. So TMAPs and the whole TDM, I mean, we have that exist, I mean, those are existing programs. And I don't know if you can answer this, but how effective are they? And we know, we have a sense of the kind of the collective impact of those programs that employers are required to have today, and so what is it, and what, so what exactly is, so then talk a little bit more about then this recommendation and how it's supposed to go above and beyond.
So there's, there are a variety of transportation demand management programs that are out there that might encourage carpooling or ride-sharing and other things like that. There is an existing commute trip reduction ordinance that's required through the state, and that only affects larger businesses. So it's businesses with 100 or more employees that travel between 6:00 and 9:00 a.m. And so if you are an affected site, you're required to have a program to work with your employees, provide incentives, do a variety of things, and there's some targets for reducing non-drive-alone trips. That does not apply to any other employers, and also does not apply to residential. The city does have some language in ordinance that provides for transportation management action plans, but it's unclear, and we believe that it requires some review and adjustment. So it does not apply to residential for So it's, does not apply to residential, for one thing. It's unclear about how it applies to commercial project types. It is a tool that's being used by a variety of communities. Bellevue, for example, Kirkland, Redmond all have this as a tool that they employ. Bellevue, the city of Bellevue right now is actually in the process of reviewing and updating it. But basically, it does provide, puts in place some management practices for those properties to incorporate and include as part of their plan. And they have shown some effectiveness in terms of reducing drive-alone trips and increasing alternative, access to alternative modes for the occupants.
So, so, so today, again, when an employer has greater than 100 employees, would they have the trip reduction program requirements?
Mm-hmm.
Right? And so this is, this is an action to, to similar tools like that, to, to require some type of a plan to more of our community, whether it be, like you said, other businesses, maybe smaller businesses, or commercial and residential, similar type trip, similar to our trip reduction, that plan that we're today.
This would be different in that it would be applying to new development. So as a part of that development and the look at the development, they would be required to put, to develop a management plan essentially for their transportation trips during the permitting phase, and that would carry through following occupancy.
Okay, yeah, yes, and of course, on, on new development, I understand.
Correct.
Okay. I did have one other question along those same lines, is that you had, one of the, again, in the rethink car habitat 2.2, the innovative parking solutions. Now, you have, that, that says, that's out beyond six years. And we just had a conversation about parking, and I'm, I'm wondering if, if anything you heard, or maybe you have learned or know about, you know, the, some of the research and the information, the ideas that were discussed here. I think that whole shared parking area, this, this idea that, that, you know, we heard that the, maybe, you know, in multifamily, the trend is to less and less requirement for parking. And I don't know those actual numbers. So when I hear about a trend, and I hear that we're trying to make some adjustments and account for that, we're thinking about ideas where maybe shared parking might be, if it can be done effectively, you know, a solution. And that you have a recommendation, don't, let's not look at innovative parking solutions beyond six years. So I was just wondering if that's a, help me understand that.
Why is it so far out?
Yeah, why is it so far out?
Well, I think in part, so we knew that the, that parking was a part of the moratorium. And so we knew through the conversations that there was going to be a look at pieces of this related to overflow and structured parking. And I'd imagined that there were, could be some recommendations that would be coming out of that in the short term. And the, I think you heard a little bit about shared parking and some of the, the issues and regulations that apply. Because the, the share, the innovative parking approaches, it could include a wide span of pieces, anything from, you know, more active engagement by the city or other modifications for regulations to enable shared parking, to more district parking approaches, to, you know, different kind of structured parking approaches where a city could have a different role. Those are longer-term thoughts, but it certainly doesn't preclude implementation of these, these nearer term. But we didn't want to, we wanted to make sure that there was the opportunity for that conversation to carry forward and then connect as we see development change in the future.
Questions? So it seems like the big change this time coming forward is the addition of all of those different components related to solar. And is that, was that in response to Councilmember Ramos's request to have some of that included?
Yes.
And I like the document. It's a great document, and maybe it's in there and I missed it. But did we talk about, in terms of sustainable building, shared storm facilities or other types of things that you do by district basis? Did we talk about specifically or generally?
We, actually, we talked about that one specifically.
Specifically.
Yes, and.
And can you remind me what it said in the?
Sure. So really, that one is taking a look at shared stormwater, low-impact stormwater development facilities, recognizing that there are limitations in the valley floor in terms of hydrology, but also in terms of site constraints. So we know from some prior decisions about urban design and form relative to the stormwater codes, that there are places where the urban design can override some of the low-impact development requirements. So this is an opportunity for thinking about things on a shared basis and seeing if there are opportunities to capture some of the benefits of low-impact development where it might conflict with urban design, providing for some of that flexibility. And then in some areas, in particular, I'm thinking about in the downtown area, we have a lot of smaller lots and constrained sites. There is an opportunity for a shared stormwater facility. And the recommendation there is to analyze that as a part of the update to the city's stormwater plan.
That I saw. I guess why I was asking, but I probably didn't phrase the question properly. I'm thinking about where cities have worked to put in a significant stormwater capture, not to do with low-impact development, but just to do with whatever the stormwater requirements are, in an area to do it on a district-wide basis for sustainability reasons, but also to bring down development costs for developers, allowing them to buy into an investment that the city makes itself. Is that captured anywhere in here?
It is.
Okay.
That's, maybe I didn't explain it well, but that was.
No, that's okay. So if it's a part of that, that's fine.
That was the, that was the intent. It requires obviously some additional analysis and review, but it's, I think it's both an incentive for development, but it's also an opportunity for providing for better storage and treatment of stormwater.
And the reason I ask that is because it's a policy document, and then there's code, but there's a larger conversation that count, would have to happen at the council level to decide to add that to our capital improvement plan.
Absolutely.
You know, that's a big discussion.
And that's actually happening in the Highlands right now. So those last subdivisions that Polygon is building, kind of in the Westridge area, they're actually buying stormwater capacity.
Capacity, awesome.
From Public Works Engineering.
Right.
And that allows them to not have to build their own vaults.
Okay.
So it's, it's potentially a win-win.
Fantastic. Thanks.
Great.
Any more questions? Okay. We have this on the agenda for action. So before we comment ourselves and deliberate, I'm going to ask any members of the public who have comments. David?
Thank you, David Kapler, again. Great, looks good. Again, just, the city's done a wonderful job with demonstration projects, Z Homes and other, other projects, the fire stations and, and that. CLT was mentioned real quickly as cross-laminated timber. Think of plywood, except making plywood beams out of two-by-sixes and things like that. There's a lot of potential for that. We, in the Issaquah Basin, have Tiger Mountain State Forest, we have the King County Taylor Mountain Forest, and we have, part of the Raging River Forest is in the Issaquah Basin rather than in the Raging River. But if we could do a project to demonstrate the ability to use cross-laminated timber in some kind of structure, it would be, it would really be good, because those forests are real important to us, and keeping them viable by being able to have another way of using those resources would be, would be good for the forest. Those forests are, are major part of our recreation activity and that draws people to Issaquah is in those forest lands. And the forestry has been quite compatible with recreation and can continue to be that. But we got to make sure those lands actually produce money as well. And this is one of the possibilities. Thank you.
Thanks. Anyone else? No? Okay. Let's go first. I actually would like to know, David, if, if you know what David Kapler is talking about, the CLT.
So cross-laminated timber is a different building material type. And so I think, sort of described it well. Plywood has structural qualities because it's thin veneer wood in different orientation, and it has, gives it some structural qualities. Cross-laminated timber is similar to that, but it's on a larger, it's not plywood. It's a, it's a product that has different structural qualities. And the idea is to connect the, the ability of local communities that are producing and using kind of local forests to essentially develop a marketplace for this different, this new product. And it's one that's been developed, but hasn't been widely used. And so the, it's an opportunity for kind of make, closing the loop economically and connected to the natural resources. So the natural resource base has a way of kind of generating revenue, providing jobs, and connecting to the local communities and local economy. So it's a, it's a different building material, basically.
Don't necessarily mean to put you on the spot, but do you see that there would be an opportunity or reason to reference something like that in this document?
We could. We could certainly highlight it as an opportunity or potential opportunity for a demonstration project.
Something for you to think about.
Okay.
Not going to suggest it or recommend it because I don't know enough about it, but it sounds like you know enough to.
I don't know enough to recommend it, but I know enough, we can take a look at it.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Go ahead.
David, I think your group and the council you work with have done a really complete and comprehensive report. I think it's awesome. Great job. Wonderful.
Thank you.
The last step, though, is to make, and also, I just wanted to say, I support the, the tone in there, which is more about recommending rather than requiring. I don't believe we should be forcing these things on the building community. They're good ideas. They're going to economically pencil out, and they're going to do them, but I don't, I just don't think we should be requiring. So I like the, the tone that is in it. I guess my, my question is, or my comment is that I hope that we complete this last step quickly, which is when this document is approved, we go back and ensure that the code, codes that we have in place for building and permitting line up to make it simple and easy for builders to come in with these innovative and creative ideas and get to use them in their projects. Because there's a lot of great stuff here, but now we have to make sure on the building and permitting end that they can do it. So that's great. Good job.
Great.
Yeah, I agree that it's just been, it's just a very, very, very thorough product that you've put together, and I don't have any issues with it. I think what the process of this has suffered from is that we have had so much on our plate this year that particularly related to the moratorium, that it falls below the, for me, anyway, falls below the priority in, in the priority list because there's so many things that we have to get done. And unfortunately, then loses a little bit of its luster and excitement because we're, feel like I'm on a judge on America's Got Talent. But it, but it's a great product. It's just that there are so many things that we've, our heads are just stuffed full of that I feel kind of bad that it's come to the council in different ways, and it hasn't been received more excitedly. And for me, that's probably the reason. It's not because I'm not excited about it, it's the, we've got so many things on our plate this year that are, that are must-dos then. But, but you've done a fabulous job, and I really appreciate the thoroughness of it and the very, very thoughtfully done. And I, I am going to recommend that we move it forward now.
I would, I agree with what, what's been said already. In fact, the comprehensive nature of, of this whole proposal is quite overwhelming. A matter of fact, it's probably a good case study for municipalities around the country of how to be comprehensive. And as you've been given more time as well, because of what Stacy talked about as well, I really do appreciate how, even with the new content that you put together to show us this evening, you're very, you're very kind of sensitive on what we really needed to, needed to see next, to help us kind of uptake, you know, the salient points and what the next steps are. And I, and especially with the, kind of the, the multiple steps of near-term and, you know, immediate and then next, and the different time horizons for the steps. So I think that's, as a kind of a policymaker and just trying to understand the comprehensiveness of your proposal, those are, those are all very, very much appreciated. I, you know, the, the goal that was set forward, the original kind of council goal of, I, I think you've really satisfied that tremendously. I think kudos to the, to the team, David, and with your leadership. There's really only praise that I have for what's in here. You've been very responsive to our comments along the way, and I, and I do very much appreciate that. So I absolutely am going to support this as well, and I do kind of look forward to this. This is a, this is really setting the tone for many years to come, especially, it's very comprehensive on, on, you know, cross-departmental, too. It's really getting everybody on the, you know, in the staff attuned to what this would, how this could impact their work as well. So it's a rather significant step, and I'm, I'm, so thank you to you and your team, and I'm going to support it going forward.
Great.
So you know this? Okay. Do you have it in front of you when it's supposed to be?
I believe it's going back to the next council meeting.
Okay, on the regular agenda?
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Sounds good. Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, Old Town Subarea Plan. Well, this item is from the agenda I see is scheduled to be before Land and Shore twice?
Twice, yes.
Tonight and July 6th, I believe?
July 6th?
6th or 7th? 6th.
Correct.
And so if you could give us a little bit of introduction for folks who are watching, and just as a reminder, and people here who may not have heard this, what we're doing here and with this. And then we probably will jump to, I think there were some questions presented. We can jump to that document and review those, and then we can get into questions, get further questions that we have and feedback and.
Great.
And see you next month.
Okay. So that's, that's right in line with my thinking there. So I've got a short presentation to bring you up to speed. And then this follows up on the May 8 work session, where we presented key policy issues, and then you gave us a list of questions, and we've come back with table one in your packet with responses, the kind of pros and cons to the various topics. So the thought is go through this quick background and then launch into table one and use that as, as a discussion guide. So here goes. Kind of what I just said, so background, plan, and process. There's a large packet, so I've got a slide giving kind of an outline of what's in there if you want to know about that. We use tables one and two as a discussion guide. And if you're comfortable confirming recommendations tonight, great, but otherwise, we just raise issues and questions and continue next month. Here's a slide from May 8, talking about the, the process. You might remember this. So the, the plan was first adopted, the sub-area plan, which is a sub-area of the comprehensive plan of, of development of the city in 1999. That was the first sub-area plan adopted in the city. It was revised or amended in 2009 just to remove the bypass. So basically, 1999 until 20, till now is the plan. In 2014, after council finished kind of deliberation on the central plan, it said, let's turn back our focus on downtown. So some council goals said, let's do that. So in 2015, an Old Town Vitality Task Force was created, representatives largely of the downtown business community, and came up with a report of recommendations to help downtown become perhaps more vital, yet keep its historic character. In 2016, we kind of launched into the official plan process update for this sub-area plan with two public outreach, open house meetings, and then continued in 2017 with meetings at the senior center and the brew house. And also had an electronic online survey that summarized in your packet about 477 or more responses. So that was into the spring of this year. And then PPC, Planning Policy Commission, had three meetings in the spring and ultimately recommended approval of the plan to you all, consistent with administration recommendation with two differing opinions to not reduce the boundary and to keep the E in Old Town. So those are the two differing items. And so now we started May 8 with the introduction, and here we are tonight, and I hope we can dive in in a bit. Another key reminder is that this, again, is the policy plan. And so 2018 and beyond is the ideas to adopt policy and then implement those through codes, codes and design development standards and whatever else we need to implement the plan These are kind of a summary of the work session items we talked about, and table one has a summary kind of discussion of those that we'll talk about in a minute. The key one I guess I'll highlight, connectivity, mobility, traffic. The key one I guess I'll highlight, connectivity, mobility, traffic, that issue is pushed out to July 6. Kurt Seaman is unavailable tonight, so that's scheduled for next time. And I guess if you have other questions, I'm sure you will, let's raise them also. Here's kind of a summary of what's in the packet. The plan itself is provided. The public input serve results of over 100 pages are in there. And then Table 1, I keep talking about. I thought there'd be some good background information on Table 1, which is the PowerPoint that generated the questions is there. Kind of when we talk about the boundary in a minute, there's an annexation history map, some architectural style document that we found from the history, historic society, and another survey of the online, another summary of the online survey. And then Table 2 is a second table requested to kind of give a summary of how does this plan address the recommendations of the Old Town Vitality Task Force? And also, how does it address any additional recommendations that came from council and the administration, such as what about the residential neighborhoods, things like that? And here's the next steps. July 6, we're planning to come back. And if... We'll see how it's going August 7 or not. So that's the plan. Okay. So we're ready to flip to Table 1, and let's start talking topics. And I'm going to... So I've got Table 1 and some Google Street Views if we want to take some tours of town as we talk about these topics. You see all that? All right. So the first one talked about why is the administration recommending changing the boundary? And to refresh your memory, do you all remember where that boundary is? I have a slide I can flip to and show that. Anyway, the north end coming down generally along the east fork of the creek would be the proposed new boundary. We have some comments. So from the task force discussions, it didn't necessarily make it in the report, but my understanding is the discussions talked about moving that boundary down in a feeling that the character of Old Town, the historic character, kind of starts at the bridge at the Isqwa Creek, the Mercantile Building, and then welcome to historic Isiqua sign. So some ideas for and against. Like I said, the character kind of feels to start there. North of the bridge is more newer construction, more of a suburban style pattern. If the boundary was moved, then likely the central Isiqua plan would become the boundary that would govern that area. And we'd work through that planning process to determine how that vision should look. On the west side of that whole boundary, Confluence Park did not exist when the plan was first written and kind of bisects this plan. So should it be in or out? And we chose, "Let's move it out," but still recognize that it's a huge integral part of Old Town and a big part of the whole city. Why shouldn't we move the boundary? Some would think it's pretty historic up towards that area, and the Grange and Triple X, Ripier, Booms have historic kind of small-town character and that that's a good reason to keep the boundary just kind of the way it is. And PPC recommended keeping the boundary as is. So there's a quick summary if you'd like to discuss and see. And I can go to a map if that helps.
Yeah, do you have a map?
Yeah.
Let's look at a map.
Right.
Make sure we're all clear.
Right there. So here's... So Crescent Drive, you know, Crescent Drive comes behind the Grange back in here. And here's the Staples Parking Lot. Front Street, Dairy Gold. And then Confluence Park is over here. And this is the remainder of Confluence Park, so it's not bisected. It's... Three-quarters of it are in Old Town. But that's the general boundary we're talking about.
What's the top red line, horizontal line? Where?
I believe that'd be Holly Street.
Okay.
It likely lines up with Holly Street.
Question. Do we know why the Old Town boundary was drawn like this in the beginning? Was this representative of the Old Township? Is that why that piece is on? And then the second piece would be, rather than just look at its character now, central Isiqua right now has a certain character, but we wrote a plan to change the character by changing the block structure and all the rest. Would we consider rethinking that, leaving it in the Old Town area and thinking about configuring it to aesthetically appear and perform much like the rest of Old Town?
I'll go with the second question first. I think if we went that way, yes, we could certainly do that and say, "As these properties redevelop, we'd like to see that area take on more of the historic, small-scale character." And then to answer the first one, in the packet, there's an annexation map. And I can flip to that. I... Do you know, is the packet up here? Yeah? Ding.
Let's go to the E. Actually, go to that one, sorry. Go down. Is it in your packet?
Yeah.
So it's going to be in one of those.
Yeah.
Annexation history.
And let's look at annexation history. And come over here.
And while Dave's looking for that, I think part of this conversation is about the feeling of arrival. And when do you feel like you're actually in Old Town? And when we did a walk around with the task force, you know, there's a lot of conversation about the creek. Even though the creek right now is kind of shunted off by that concrete bridge, it's really this thing that if it was actually more identifiable, would be a real gateway to Old Town. And so, you know, if you can kind of wrap your head around the creek being the edge to Old Town, then this northern piece wants to be part of central Isiqua. If, on the other hand, you think, "Well, really, the entrance to Old Town is at the intersection of Front and Gilman," which is much more... It's much more car-oriented. I think that's the crux of this for me in my head. And it's... I don't know. I mean, there's a lot of stuff we can talk about, but for me, it's where do you feel like you've actually stepped into kind of Old Town? And I think to some extent, for me, it was the creek.
So again, it kind of gets into that transition between one neighborhood and another. And I don't disagree that the feeling is different on one side of the creek than the other. But the way that the district visions currently are in central Isiqua is, to me, this area is neither. It is neither central Isiqua. It is not what you might call Old Town. But it is absolutely the gateway to Old Town. And I'm not sure that if we move the boundary and make it part of central Isiqua, that that transition to what's envisioned for that area makes any sense at all. So we might, by putting it in one or the other, lose the opportunity to actually create the gateway that we're talking about right now. So I'm kind of stuck on that. And I'm not sure if you talked about that with the Old Town Task Force or not, that what the treatment ought to be. Just shunting it over to central Isiqua, to me, seems like you had choice A or B and nothing in between. Did you guys have any kind of conversation like that?
I don't think specifically to that. I know Barack is here, and it looks like he might want to talk at some point. But at the time, it was kind of more, where did it feel like that kind of entrance spot to Old Town was? Not so much what happened to the north of that.
Okay.
The... So the old, I'm sorry, central area district visioning, I'm sorry, neighborhood visioning.
Yes.
And is that exercise encompassing this potential additional, addition part to that predefined neighborhood? What do we call that in the central area that neighborhood is known as?
Old Route 10.
Old Route 10.
So there's two neighborhoods where we're talking about... Maybe there's three. There's two or three neighborhoods that we're talking about potentially changing boundaries. One is the Old Route 10 to add this area, if ultimately that's what comes out of this conversation. The other is to add Lake Samamish State Park into... Which neighborhood is that?
Samamish.
Samamish?
Samamish.
Because it wasn't actually in the city when we did the central Isiqua plan, but it seems like it should actually be in CIP at this point, so.
Yeah. And the reason I ask, I think the neighborhood visioning for what we're calling Old Route 10, you know, has the opportunity to, you know, create a space, a place that can serve, you know, both needs. I think that there may be some redevelopment opportunities there that might be more consistent with what we want in the central area. And yet, given a character that, like you said, Old Route 10, is that old with an E or not?
There's no E on that one.
Yeah, okay. It's not quaint. It's an old Route 10, formerly known as Route 10, in that it can, but also acknowledge the historical nature that it has. Like we talked about those businesses that are in there, such as the Triple X and the Grange and others. And so I think, I would hope... It may... This redrawing the line makes sense to me if the neighborhood visioning is sensitive to that role that it plays in conjunction with Old Town. But also, it's, you know, conversely, it's the other way around into the central area as well. I think we have a unique opportunity with that visioning to address both needs.
Next.
And Keith mentioned Barack's here. I want to make, just introduce Barack Rosenblum and Christina Bruning of Downtown Isqwa Association are here. You request at least for one item that's coming up that the representatives be here. So thank you for being here. Your choice if you want to hear them now or later, but...
Yeah, let's continue on.
Okay. So back to the table. So we've heard enough about number one, so now we head south. Well, and Mary Lou, we had the map up there, and I just clicked away from it, but do you want to? Okay. So looking at the south end of town, what are the pros and cons for removing that area? And so I'm going to be flipping between maps tonight. I got to keep this straight. So it's kind of like, kind of south of Clark Street or so and the middle school heading down Front Street to Second Avenue. And so what's the thought behind that? The administration's recommending keeping it the way it is. But I think, again, the character of development, the age of development is more in the, I think, the 50s, 60s, 70s versus old historic, turn-of-the-century Old Town. So you could argue that it has a different character. But then removing this area would... I guess when redevelopment occurs, do we want, again, have the vision develop more in keeping with the small-scale, smaller-lot kind of neo-traditional urban design or kind of the suburban style that's down that way? So that's kind of the juxtap of that is how I see that.
I had a question on that. So one of the things I keep looking at, Dave, is the guiding principles that are in the existing subarea plan. And reading through those, there's a strong sense that this area south does still belong. And when you read through what we're trying to do in the subarea plan. But I would say that if there is... I would like to see what the Sycamore Subarea Plan looks like, and that would be a useful piece of information to balance out and see what it says versus what the Old Town says before deciding that an area should move one way or the other.
So there's not a Sycamore Subarea Plan?
Okay.
There's just the comprehensive plan, so.
Oh, it's just a Sycamore Subarea. It has a name. It has no plan.
Right. It's a geographic area of town, so it'd be governed more by the comprehensive plan and the larger policies.
Are there many areas in town not covered by subarea plans?
There's the central Isiqua subarea and the Old Town subarea.
It's referred to different areas.
Some primary subareas. Okay. There's just some plans for some areas, but there isn't one for some.
Right. Right. Yeah. So those are thoughts to keep it kind of the way it is. But we've got some policies in the plan to, if it stays that way, to develop policies so when redevelopment does occur, we start guiding development, redevelopment towards kind of the pattern, like I said, the small-scale, more historic pattern in this part of Old Town. So feel good about that? All right. So moving on to Front Street. We get into the discussion about character and scale and what is the... Remember in the, kind of the public opinion and surveys, a lot of discussion about keep that kind of one-to-two-story main street look and then perhaps consider wedding, stepping back above the second story, up to about four stories or so. So the reasons for and against that. So the question, I guess, was why not limit just to three stories? I guess we'd say we're trying to find a happy medium between the one and two. And today's regulations that can go to four, all the way up to six stories or 65 feet with quite a lot of wedding, caking, or stepping back. Reasons to keep it at three to four stories, you know, keeps the small scale that we're largely hearing comments and a preference for that, as well as what's built out there. Again, they're about two stories or so. The Village Theater steps, it's two stories at the street and steps back to 65 feet in the back, the fly tower against first place that you can't really see from Front Street. But there's, that's the one building that I can think of that would be above that limit. The rest of them are at two, maybe three stories. And then if things were to build out to that four- to six-story height, you start creating perhaps kind of a canyon feel as you look south or north. Today, it's a little opened up. You can see the Squawk Mountain. Those are the reasons for. And then, you know, the reasons against, we're kind of taking away some development rights that have existed for decades. They haven't been realized yet largely, but they're there. And again, the Village Theater would become legal non-conforming with respect to height. So there's some thoughts on that.
In walking up into Front Street this week and on the Rainier Trail, I was looking at the height of the buildings, including the theater, and what you can see as you walk. And while the theater does obscure some of the view of the hillsides, if we were... Was that taken into consideration? I can't remember. Does the staff recommend to leave it at four or?
We're recommending...
Leave it at 65?
No, to take it to four stories.
Take it to four.
With the wedding cake.
For most of the buildings that are currently two stories or two and a half, because some of them are an odd height, you can still see the hills from the Rainier Trail walking, and you can still see the hills walking on Front Street, most places. So if we go with the staff's recommendation, will we not? We won't be able to see the hills from the trail or?
If they go above two to three and four stories?
They go to four stories.
I guess not. You won't probably have that 180 view. It might be more constrained. As you stand at Front Street, you can look south and see see kind of that part of Squawk Mountain that's south. If we want to go for a drive, we've got a Google Street View.
That's the way I walked in.
Okay. All right.
So David, just to be perfectly clear, so currently 45 feet is allowed with step back to 65.
Yeah.
Right. And the recommendation to... Is there a recommendation to change this?
Yes. It's to drop it down to 50 feet, which gets, which allows a person to build true four-story buildings. So 45 makes it really hard to get, remember this, to get to four stories because the first floor retail is, you know. So it's to go to 50 feet. With keeping the step backs above the second floor, so you kind of don't have that.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Number four, are step backs compatible with the Old Town character? We've talked about it. I guess we just talked through kind of the reasons for it. Prevents the walled effect. We heard, I remember in the central plan discussion of when you start stepping back, bringing the loads of the upper floors down through the walls becomes a very costly, a costly element. becomes a very costly, a costly element if you have to have that step-back. So, that was kind of a reason to get away from that. So, perhaps architectural styles or some fenestration, articulation of facades could be another way to add interest while keeping the, kind of the, the street wall more vertical. That'd be a reason to take away the step-backs. And we don't have many step-backs to look at right now in Front Street. Basically, the Village Theater is about it. No comments? Move on? All right. Is it better, does limiting the height by feet rather than stories, it doesn't really help achieve the character. It's a different way to measure the height. I think it helps when we're working with developers, how many feet can I build to? Right? You've got a measurable tool. I think more laypeople might understand how many stories is a building. You can get a feel for that. So, I think the design standards, development of design standards are the ways to address character of buildings versus feet and stories. Number six, will we get a consultant to amend the development of design standards? We'll see. Maybe. Let us know. All right. So, it's, it can be worked, as you know, and you're hearing for other elements of our codes. It's helpful to have consultants on the work capacity and their expertise, but it costs money. So, I guess that's our choice, your choice, as this moves forward in 2018 and beyond. So, moving on to East Sunset Way, please invite us some, so Barack and Christine are here. As we launch into this discussion about retail was one of the discussions. So, today, retail is not allowed on Sunset Way. It's on Front Street, and the discussion was, should it be allowed or not? My understanding is the task force recommends yes for retail. The administration is thinking, a concern of, could potentially kind of dilute the vitality of retail on Front Street. So, as well as we heard some concern about some spillover parking impacts possibly into the adjacent neighborhoods. So, for those reasons, and I guess the reason for the retail on Sunset is you can add some more kind of pedestrian activity, some more vitality on Sunset Way right here with the retail activity there. If you want to hear from, okay. Come on up if you.
Hi, Barack Rosenbloom, 275 Front Street South. For a long time, Dia has had the sort of position that having the same use requirements or allowing the same kind of use on Front Street and Sunset makes sense as the area gets more vibrant and vital. And also, there was, you know, that we started talking about that a number of years ago. I don't remember the full details, but there was a landowner who had some property and a lot of businesses actually wanted to move in. And we've kind of seen things poking down a little bit in that first building. That's now where the chiropractor is, and on the front floor, there's the cellphone repair thing. But, you know, there's already a lot of business down Front, Sunset, and, you know, just having the opportunity to expand that, you know, just something that Dia has always supported. I'm going to switch hats. I was also on the Old Town Vitality Task Force. I'm heartened every time I see old with no E. But I went back and looked at the recommendations, and they, it said that we recommend that the council consider expanding that. I don't know that we made an explicit, it should expand to the same kind of use. But certainly talked a lot about that, and was kind of like, this is a little bit bigger maybe than what we can, can do. So, that's what Dia has. Christine, do you have, Christine, anything to add? Yeah. And frankly, we haven't looked at this in great detail, but just something that we think is certainly, makes sense.
Thanks, Barack.
So, the plan is written now as recommending leaving the retail off Sunset Way. So, think about that. Okay. Let's see. Number nine, let's see, moving on. Unless you want to talk about, oh, let's go to number nine about talking about similarly reducing the height along the street. So, today, the height limit is 40 feet, and with, again, that wedding cake setback element can go up to 60 feet on this street, based on the, a lot of input that we received. So, the, we're recommending reducing the height to four stories along this street. And reasons, as you might guess, are residents, you know, concerned about potential impacts to the adjacent homes. If we drop the height in the single-family, duplex zone properties to two stories, then you'd have that kind of one-story step. So, I'm sorry, we're, it's a three-story recommendation on Sunset Way. Reasons not to do this, again, we're taking away some potential development rights for some property owners on the street. This zone has been, this potential height of 40 to 60 feet's been there, again, for decades. It's only been realized twice with the two multifamily projects on the south side of Sunset Way. So, those would become legal non-conforming uses.
Okay. Number 10.
Okay. Was parking considered when we were asking the question about reducing height along the street? I'd say not really. We're focused on what's the building scale and character that we'd like to see on this street. I think we got some comments from the public about concern about spillover parking into the adjacent neighborhood, for sure. If we don't do it in Old Town, you know, how does it fit into Isiqua? So, the majority of growth is envisioned to go to Central Isiqua, as well as to those areas remaining in the Highlands or in Talis that can build out. So, that's where those types of development would go. Why not have it on Sunset Way? I suppose with higher stories, you have a little more ability for diverse, different types of unit types. Not a lot, but some. But again, the majority of growth heading outside of Old Town, that'd be kind of a reason for that.
About how many questions do we have? Okay. So, I'm going to ask that we just kind of go down to each question.
Uh huh.
And I'm going to assume that the committee has read the answers.
Okay.
And if we have questions.
All right. All right.
Ask.
So, turning to the single-family duplex neighborhoods, north and primarily in north and south of Sunset Way. Got lot consolidation?
Just allow committee members to say.
What's that?
I'll just allow committee members to speak up if they have a question.
Okay.
Questions on 12?
Nope.
Nope. Questions on 13, how would the city enforce traditional design here? 14, how many architectural styles exist currently in the Old Town neighborhoods? 15, regarding
Cottage housing?
Cottage housing? 16, carry over or modify the multifamily development and design standards to address single-family duplex development?
So, I think that's probably the way I phrase the question, but not letting that.
Okay. Yeah.
I didn't mean to just use what was in the guidelines for multifamily. I guess I was trying to point out that we don't have the same thing for single-family or duplex. And so, while I agree that you can't typically take the standards, or my question was, could we add design guidelines for single-family and duplex that contain the same type of categories of design criteria that was in the other one? That was more the question.
Okay.
Not just carrying it over, but can we just create another section?
So, you can. Typically, why single-family's not regulated to the same extent as multifamily or commercial or retail is because it's seen as affecting an individual property owner's rights, right, versus a business? Because even a multifamily project is like a business. So, it can be done. It's done in communities that are, that are closing in on like historic, historic districts. So, there, there are high level of regulation. And if that's what we want for Old Town, we can definitely do that. That's, I'll see the decision for you guys.
Follow-up question. They're called guidelines, but we actually have them in code?
So, so there, I would call them performance standards. So, they're written as guidelines. Sometimes, it says you can't do these things. Like, in Old Town now, there's a colored board that nobody can really understand anymore. But there's a colored board that says you have to use these colors. And so, in some ways, so it usually gives a certain amount of latitude, but it might also be, you can't do a contemporary home in Old Town. Might be that, if we do them, it could be that black and white.
So, is it possible to do a performance standard for single-family homes that isn't as restrictive as you're saying, but it writes a set of guidelines, the performance standards, where you create a character that is different than a suburban character?
Absolutely.
Okay. That's more my.
Yes. Great.
17, it's about addressing concerns expressed about ADUs.
All right.
18, talk about, talk about volume reduction in terms of regional traffic must be discussed in conjunction with the plan.
So, these are traffic things to talk about at the July meeting when Kurt's here?
When Kurt's here.
What's that?
This is about mobility and connectivity, and Kurt's not here tonight. He's coming to the July 6 meeting. So, the rest of these questions, I guess, we're going to go over July 6, because Kurt's not here to.
There's one more. Unless you have any that you want, any clarifications that I can take back to Kurt for July?
Sure.
So, if you can go back up to 18, David?
Uh huh.
The volume reduction, there's nothing on there about volume reduction in actual action categories. Isiquah about road. The talk about there was capacity improvements. Those would actually bring more cars to town. RTSI is not dealing with Front Street, continually seeking grant opportunities for regional quarters. None of that is about reducing traffic. So, bringing that to Kurt's attention that all of that will actually do nothing. We need, we need something in the subarea plan that does something about traffic on Front Street. And that's not it.
I will relay the comments.
I have comments about that as well, but I'm going to make my comments when we're talking about this, the actual.
Okay. So, there are a couple at the end, about the E. Old Town, why remove it? Yes or no? The task force recommends removing. It's unnecessary, presents the wrong image for the neighborhood. That's what the plan, that's what the report says. Administration says we'll keep, or the reason against is, some people have said it keeps the authentic kind of unique character. And I remember that comment was, if you take the E away, it's just old and dying and declining. So.
It's really going to be the most difficult decision we have this year, whether I keep an E.
So, think about that. And then, the next one is, so is there historical legitimacy for the E? Not, not, not a lot. Depends what history is for you, '93 through '95. But, yeah. So, it was created back in the 90s.
Okay.
Okay. So, that's Table 1. Are there other, we've got, we've, what else you want to talk about for the plan? That's kind of where I, I've got Table 2. We can go through the list of recommendations in the plan, if that would help, or any comments?
I don't think we need to go through them unless, I mean, you can pull them up.
I might prompt discussion.
And I think I want to know if, I have some questions about the plan itself.
Okay.
And maybe other committee members do as well. And then, we'll do public comment. And then, we have, I guess we don't have to have necessarily final comments, because we're not taking any action tonight.
Mm-hmm.
But we can continue on with questions and comments.
Okay.
To agree with that?
Yep.
So, you, go ahead and pull up the, the list of policy.
So, this goes in order of the task forces kind of topics. So, we got increase the base height on Front Street. We've talked about that. So, I'll go through these, or what?
You can, excuse me, you can kind of scroll and see if.
Tell me to stop?
I don't, I'm not going to have any questions on this chart.
Okay. Changing the pervious. Recommend going to Greenery instead of impervious pervious on Front Street. Keeping the step-back requirement, yes. But some flexibility to do that if there's a better design.
We're going to get to it here. It's on.
Encouraged sidewalk activity, of course, but not really through a plan, more through implementation things. Sign standards someday, maybe is a larger sign code update process. Parking, you heard about parking tonight?
Keep going.
Okay.
Got to go all, you got that little thing's got to go all the way to the bottom. So, I don't want to stop.
Color palette, we're finding. Change the boundary.
Know your questions?
Yeah. Okay.
I don't have any on, I don't have any questions on any of them, so.
All right.
It's just more the, it's the, kind of the proposed amendment to consider rezoning East Sunset Way to allow more standalone commercial uses and increased pervious surface maximums. So, the administration recommendation is do not recommend, right? And that's consistent. But then, there's some, but the second subbulon there says reduce building heights to three stories to maintain existing scale. So, so that's, that's in the line of this removing, kind of limiting or tailing the current development rights that property owners have. So, so what have we gathered as the administration, or is it in the record here, you know, kind of comments of property owners along East Sunset Way about this potential change?
Talked to a couple along the street, and I've not heard anyone say no yet, if that's, or, you know, we had the host of public comments, you saw that.
So, there's just been complete silence on this so far?
Fairly quiet. Fairly quiet, yeah.
Okay. So, yeah, they just, that's, this may not be the only time around the city that we consider kind of changing some zoning if we really want to have, you know, bigger picture, growth happen, you know, in the central area, right? So, kind of downzoning, so to speak, is what this would be, is, is a pretty significant step to take. And I just want to make sure that we are really, that, you know, people really understand that this is being discussed. And we can just, and maybe they pick it up, but, or maybe they don't. Maybe we need to be a little bit more proactive in getting the property owners in on that dialogue.
I think if we're looking at basically what is analogous to a downzone, we need to be sending out specific letters to property owners, because they may be absentee property owners. So, if that's where this is going, if there's support for that along Sunset and maybe somewhere else as part of other conversations, we should take that step. Absolutely.
Other questions? Yeah, we can, since we're not making a recommendation tonight, we can provide more questions and comments for feedback, and then we'll do a public comment. And then, if there are any final comments you want to make, you can do that. Sure.
So, just starting at a high level. Something that will really help me understand if this update of the Old Town Subarea Plan is doing what we want it to do, is some sort of table that goes back to the guiding principles, which I totally agree with, that are in the original document, Community Sense of Place, Housing, Connectivity, Mobility, Environment, Economic Vitality. Tell me how we're accomplishing that with the change. I, just some gaps that I see right away, year-round gathering places. I don't know what that means, except that I do know in the winter, nobody gathers in Old Town because it rains and we don't have covered spaces. So, if that is community sense of place, and I believe it is, what's in here that gets us there? And a couple of other examples are preserving affordability of housing. I actually need to, I need to see how we're doing that. Just saying we're going to introduce a cottage standard, and if nobody ever uses it? a cottage standard and if nobody ever uses it. I need to understand what level of affordability we have right now in that area and what we put in here that will make sure that we preserve it, because that's what we said we're going to do under the principle. Couple other examples are desirable streets for pedestrians. How are we going to do that? Are we going to put things in here like we're going to explore and pilot things like the pedestrian scramble? Are we going to add more cross rocks? Are we going to reduce the number of cars? How are we going to do all that? So I believe it's right in there, I just don't see it in the changes. There's another one under environment that talked about improving access to East Fork. I agree with that, I don't, I just don't see it. So for me, I kind of need some sort of, this is going to be my checklist of have we updated the sub area plan to get it to where we want it to be today and to meet those guiding principles? And then these are just some more general comments. I'm still quite confused about the boundary change at the north. I'm still not sure, I've heard something that convinces me we should change the boundary or what that change might look like. So that for me is still a big question mark. Building heights, um, all through here, I can see stuff that talks about mountain views and forested hillsides, but my head right now is really stuck at, I'm not sure why anything along Front Street should be taller than three stories. I think taller than that in other areas of town makes sense, but in your historic area, when you're talking about being a mountain town with beautiful street hillsides, but you won't be able to see them once you build out, that, that doesn't seem right to me. Retail on Sunset, I think you need to touch with some outside expertise. I think Brock's awesome, but he's not, you know? I want some. I want an expert to tell me that we will not dilute our current retail area by going onto Sunset, or you're, you don't have to, you won't dilute it, but you can't go past this block and that. I need numbers and data, just like things that we heard from Econ Northwest tonight. Residential in height, I'm looking at the recommendations and I'm pretty stuck on, there should be a limit in the residential of two stories, and by that, it's the true, two stories. And I mean, we maybe should consider some language in there that says no variances to roof heights. If it's twenty-eight feet, it's twenty-eight feet, period, end of story. This area is very different than a lot of other neighborhoods in town. I think limiting it to two stories there and three stories in the CBD would create the right transition for, from the CBD to the residential areas, but two-story to the one-story stock that we're still going to have in Old Town for a long time. We have a lot of cottages, we have a lot of ramblers, they're not all going to get built at the same time. I think that's the right level. I'm very, very excited about the cottage housing. I would have brought it up under the affordable housing strategy anyway if it wasn't there. I, I think ADUs is absolutely the way to get increased density in Old Town. And I think that would, would have to come with a design standard. So under those guidelines, if we're going to add something for residential standard, I think you have to add it for ADUs as well. I'm totally supportive of adjusting the parking standards to help businesses down there. I've heard lots of stories about opportunities lost because businesses want to put a certain retail use in and have seating on the front and seating on the back, and they have to have X number of parking spots, and now the whole thing falls through. And so I think we need to think that through. I really want Kurt to put some energy into what a specific transportation policy for Old Town looks like, and I'm not seeing it here now. For me, I need to see in this plan that we are doing something to reduce traffic and to make pedestrian movements easier, and, and I would even say to make pedestrian movements a priority. That might mean a crosswalk every block, turning right turn lane pockets into parking spots so that this area is different, and I'm not seeing it right now in what we're, I'm not seeing enough in what we're proposing right now. Also, just to go back on Councilmember Winterstein's point, I'd written a note down that when we get to a draft of what the new sub area plan looks like, we need to have a public format, and we need to bring people in the room, and we need to provide notice to everybody, residences, businesses, and property owners of what's in here and what's substantive. That means providing them notice by mail with a link to the draft and an invitation to come and talk to us about it. We can give them some over, overview bulleted points about reducing heights, but we need to talk about this. Some of these changes are really significant, and so it needs a public touch before it moves up through the council. Let's hit for comments.
So I'm, I'm looking at this a little bit differently. And so I started just reading the plan because I feel like I need to spend some time with the plan itself to see if I think it's going to get us where we're trying to go. And so I started off with the first, like, Old Town community. And the very first goal says, create an attractive and inviting community that prioritizes pedestrian safety and comfort, enhances the quality of life, and establishes a sense of place within Old Town. So when I, when I read this goal, I get a little confused because it suggests that we all, don't already have an attractive and inviting place that prioritizes pedestrian safety and comfort, and it enhances the quality of life and establishes a sense of place. I think it's the first part, the attractive and inviting community that I think we already have. So what are we, so what are we really trying to do? And I flipped through the following pages and looked at some of the goals and the policies, and I couldn't figure out what we're trying to do. So I started just kind of goofing around and getting some ideas myself, and looking online at some different places such as PPS.org, which is Project for Public Spaces, and I know we're not all just talking about public spaces in here, but it's an incredibly inspiring website if people watching in here would like to go to it. It's about how to create amazing public spaces, and it's very, very inspiring and innovative and vibrant, lively, exciting types of places. So I started thinking, what are we, what are we trying to do here? And when I read this document, I don't know that I see what, what we're trying to do. So my brain goes to, well, we must be trying to do something. And maybe are we trying to sort of transform Old Town from a motor-centric or regional traffic hub to a community that's designed to create thriving and livable environments for people, not just cars? Doing, are we trying to create a cultural destination as well? And so I think what's sort of fundamentally missing in the document is words that create visualization of the kind of area that we're trying to create. That's what I, that's what I don't find in here. And so that's kind of where I stop. Because I need to look at this document and go, oh, man, this is what we're trying to create. And then from that language, everything just kind of falls out. I, I think there's, you know, at a, at a much lower level, there's a lot, there's, there's too much about, you know, just a green necklace and wayfinding, and all these little things that I think are going to happen and will end up doing, but I don't think they by themselves create the place that we're trying to create. And I don't know what that, what that place is. So what I, what my mind goes is that maybe, maybe we need to have some outside expertise pull together all of the great information that we have, I mean, we have a ton of information. And I'm wondering if we need help pulling together a document that kind of takes this to another level. And I say that carefully because I know that we have people on staff working on it, but I also talked about it before when we were talking about mixed use. And I kind of think that, that what we have here is a lot of work that gets us to a point where we've just kind of bitten off some big things, nibbled around the edges, but we haven't really done anything significant to take us to a place where we really want to go. And I'm not, this doesn't do it for me yet. So I don't know.
Okay.
So that's, that's how I, I'm, and I, and I could look at the details and I can tweak words and I can do all of that, but I'm not finding the words that tell me where we're trying to go.
The big verbal visionary, visionary picture.
So what, what kind of, what kind of, what are we trying to do? Where are we trying to go? What does, what do we want it to look like? What do we want it to feel like? You know? We struggled immensely in, or could still struggling without the Central Issaquah area. And I think we are at a place where we were a few weeks ago with the mixed use urban design guidelines where we thought, you know what? Maybe we need to just hand this off, and maybe we don't do it today. I mean, maybe we have to wait for budget time, I don't know. Those are my. And I know, we've, like I said, we've got a ton of work into it, a lot of people worked on it, the task force and staff and public seen it. And I don't think we're looking at another effort. I think we're looking at another step that might require some additional funding. That's all I got.
So that's interesting, as you were speaking, Stacy, I think about, we, we know that there's some history here, so I'm just, I'm just kind of reacting off the top of my head to your thoughts here. And I wonder when we gathered people together and said, let's, you know, bring, bring the task force together and take a look at this. I would assume the thought was, okay, we've got something, we have a basis, and now it's been a couple decades. And, and what adjustments should we make to this baseline? What do we like, what we do not like? What do we want to preserve? What's happened? What have been some of the unintended consequences that have happened based upon the original plan? And, and do we like those, or do we want to, or do we want to make some changes to prevent them, such as building heights, for example? So, so I would have just, if you'd have asked me beforehand, I would just said, this is an adjustment to an existing plan, it's not trying to recreate something new. And, and that's what, then there's a lot of changes, you know, there are tweaks.
It's an entirely new document.
Well, it's an update to a sub area plan.
No, it's an entirely new document.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, but I'm, I'm going back to the, to the, to the original when we pulled the task force together. So, and so. And so. Anyway, so that's just my, that's my, just reaction to what you're saying there is like, if, 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 and I thought Mary Lou said it well earlier, is that there is an original intent, and, you know, and we're looking at how well have we done? How well have we achieved that? And are we still trying to achieve that? So maybe that's, maybe, maybe it's more of a narrative on this rewritten document and the original, uh, sub area plan. I mean, I'd like to, you know, this is, yeah, it is, it looks brand new. You might not know that it is actually an update.
It's repackaged, I think. I feel like the ideas are quite similar to the ninety-nine one, if you start looking at the ideas. So it was just easier to start rewriting it than to follow that old format, so we went to a new format.
So, but I think to all three of your points, I mean, so we started down this path with some recommendations from the task force, which were actually, I mean, I think they were, they were all pretty benign. I mean, it was like, hey, Central Issaquah's got better parking standards than we have, let's, let's get those. Hey, they've got better pervious requirements, let's get those. You know, and so it was kind of like, I mean, it was a lot of that. But as we've kind of unpackaged this, you know, we're talking about lowering building heights, we're talking about where's the gateway? Where's the edge of Old Town? And so you start to get, I think all three of you are starting to talk about things that are a little bit different than where we started, and that is, what's the intent here? I mean, if the intent here is that this is kind of a historic part of our city and we want to keep it that way, then that starts to be a little bit of a different thing than just updating the existing sub area plan. Even though the standards, I think, are, have not really been taken advantage of to their full extent, so in some ways, the market has actually driven kind of what this area wants to be. But if concern is that there's influences coming in that could change what's here, because the standards allow a lot more than what's been realized, well, then maybe what we need to do is kind of talk about that piece, because that then drives, if ultimately what comes out of this is code that takes away some of the development ability by lowering, you know, heights and maybe limiting uses to what could otherwise happen today, and maybe getting rid of some flexibility, because maybe the code has too many allowances for administrative modification of standards. You know, there needs to be some kind of bigger theme that talks to all that, that's, that, that sets the framework for all these changes that are coming that the community can understand, why we're doing this? Why are we lowering heights? Why are we doing, you know, why are we potentially implementing single family design guidelines? Those, that's a big thing, right? And so that one piece might be the missing thing for all of us, I don't know. But I think you guys have identified something that is, is lacking maybe at the moment that we could, I think, start to talk about as staff, see where that goes as a first step.
I agree and disagree. I agree that I think, based on the comments you heard tonight, regrouping with your team isn't a great idea, because maybe we have wandered into something that's a little different than the draft that you brought us tonight. But I disagree that we need to maybe stop and work on something else before we work on the plan or work on the code. I, I feel like there's a time sensitivity to this. Product has been built in the last five years that, that didn't work, and the region is growing, and we're in a building boom, and it's actually cheaper to build outside of the Central Issaquah area where we want it than it is to build in the area. And so I feel time sensitivity to this. And so if you regroup with your team and want to come back and say, based on what we heard, we have some interim code amendments that we might want to float by you and continue to work on the sub area plan, fine, but I actually, I'm, I'm nervous. I'm a little disappointed with some of the things I've seen, and, you know, just sitting on land and shore and hearing requests that come in all around Central Issaquah to do different things kind of really freaks me out. So I, I want something to happen this year.
So was your, were your comments in response to something Keith said, or?
Keith said, just Keith's last comments right now about, I agree with the regrouping. I want to see some action in a very timely manner on code that, I understand it might need public touches, and I understand it may not come in the form of the plan, but I want something in it.
So I wasn't necessarily saying slowing down the train, I was actually trying to keep the train on the tracks. So, but to be clear, Dave's timeline was suggesting code in eighteen. Your, your concern about urgency, I think as part of our regroup on Vision, we'll talk about whether, whether and to what extent potentially some code could happen this year.
Well, in light of moratorium eighteen is probably not an issue, right? It's a moratorium.
Seven, seven, seven things.
And I, and I think we need help writing it, because I don't, I don't think we're, I think, I think this plan needs help the way our other plans have needed help. Over again?
So at a, at a different level, one, one comment I wanted to share was, I, I don't understand, and I, I didn't mark it in my electronic copy, so I'm sorry, I can't tell you exactly where it is. But I recall reading and thinking about the comment about, and I think it has to do with the building heights on Front Street, and how we wanted to create, be more competitive with potential, you know, um, with, with the potential redevelopment in the central area, and less than that, I think it was proposed that this change would make this area more competitive for potential redevelopment on Front Street. If I, if I remember that characterization correctly? So, so I don't, I don't understand that. Actually, that kind of shocked me. And so that, that, that whole idea of let's make it a very clear, you can go to, you know, the, the number of stories you can get on Front Street and, and that, that would, so it could be more competitive, that's the part I'm struggling with the most, that that height, but like you said, those capable, that capacity has been there for quite a long time. But like you said, those capable, that capacity has been there for quite a long time. And, and, and I don't know why, you know, it wasn't taken advantage of, but there's a significant impact to go higher, I mean, to the character of the place. And I'm going to go back out there and look at it again, but, so that, that idea, let's allow, let's make it clear, you can go higher and there's an impact. That's the one that I'm struggling with the most, that recommendation.
I guess, I, I think it was not just the height, it's the whole package. You know, if you look at our codes versus other places, it's the parking requirements and the impervious and the building height.
In terms of the competitive, the comments about being competitive?
That perhaps they, they make it harder.
More attractive to redevelopment.
They make it harder to develop down here than other places.
So you, okay, you don't think it was just pertaining to the building heights?
I don't, I don't think so.
I think it reads that way, but okay, I'll, I'll find it again. Well, thank you for that, yeah. Okay.
All the comments?
Please.
Yep. Right, anybody here like to speak? Yep, Barack?
I took a lot of notes. And I have my, my, my individual hat on, no longer my DIA board member hat or, or task force or traffic task force hat. So the first thing I thought about that came up quite a bit was those boundary zones. Those were conversations we had in the, in the task force and the importance of transitioning from whether it's the Highlands down Sunset, from, you know, coming off of Gilman, coming south Bisquaw-Hobart Road. And I'm very glad to hear the thinking was like, well, how do we, you know, are there maybe some sort of transitional zones or transitional ways of thinking about those to really connect? And there's often a lot of vitality that can be just in those. I agree with Councilmember Polly's comment that I think there may be some serious expertise needed in looking at the actual development down Sunset and what the impact would be of changing the, what's allowed there as far, far as, and I, and I can imagine it working both ways, but I just don't know. I think my broadest comment is that, you know, I look ahead, you know, what are people 80 years from now, 100 years from now going to say about Old Town Issaquah? Are they going to say, you know, if we, if we were there suddenly, would we say, wow, this is recognizable? This has somehow that same feel, that same sense of place, that same sense of community? This is what it was 50 years ago and 100 years ago, still updated, still modern, still, you know, vibrant. And I think that's a huge challenge in looking at these codes, looking at these issues, and as several of you said, having that broader sense of what do we want to create and everything in the codes, everything in the plans fitting into that larger framework. I think without that, it's just sort of scattershot and you may get what you want or not, but until you're crystal clear at that broad image of what is this in 80 years, you know, you just don't know. My last huge comment is that E, that's been my mission for years. I think of it as, there was, there was disco, then there was yield, coffee shop-y, and by the time that was fading out in the big cities in 1993, Issaquah added the E. And, and, and just, it's time for it to go. It's just an anachronism. It's not quaint. And that is, yeah, and, and also the, so on that same boundary zone, it's also those residential areas. And, you know, in the traffic, transportation task force, I argued very strongly against the Third Avenue Bridge because of what it would do to that community. If that community changes and starts growing and getting bigger, that has a huge impact on Front Street and the entire character. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Justin? Maybe we can add an option, old, A-U-L-D.
Yeah, A-U-L-D.
Someone's phone's up here, is it? Justin Walsh, again. I echo Barack's comments about staying recognizable. And I also agree with Councilmember Polly that if the expertise isn't there, we need to get the expertise. My worry regarding the height standards has to do with making sure that we're hitting that minimal density to make sure that mixed use is actually feasible and vibrant. And I worry that maybe three stories isn't enough to do that, to create that density. Maybe four stories is what it takes. But the thing is, we just don't know at this point and we need to have that studied. Having that incentivization to bring in businesses could lead to redevelopment of some of those properties that have been sitting stagnant and underutilized and that don't fit into Old Town anymore and could allow newer buildings to go up that fit the look and character and keep it recognizable. Regarding residential, I think if we're looking at the height standards for the residential, we also need to be certain that we're not saying two stories because inclusion of basements could maintain that look and feel and we need to make sure that we're looking at that. And I do agree that we need to always tie it back to the objectives for Old Town and look at that. Regarding the E, no one has said this yet, I'm going to throw it out there. We could take it off old and add it to the end of town. I've seen that done before. But thank you.
David?
Well, it's kind of good to see the confusion of the council on this because I'm, I'm torn. I'm, I'm a resident of the city. My brother owns the building and the business next door, so I've got interests that way. I think it's the only, East Sunset's the only commercial zoning on East Sunset is that one, but it goes way, way back as historic business there. I think the potential of having some kind of commercial retail or retail businesses on further east, east of here on East Sunset is possible, but there's places where they have no parking in front because, and they have the building, house or whatever it is, building is right up there. So they are completely dependent on parking off an alley or parking somewhere else. So, but there's, there's places on there where I think they can come up with their own parking and have some space to infiltrate, to take care of their, their pervious area. On Front Street, if somebody wants to build a four-story building, what about parking? I don't think that the general taxpayers should be subsidizing so people can build four stories on, 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 on Front Street, subsidizing parking garages for them or subsidizing pervious surface areas where they can infiltrate their, their water. If, if you can have bigger buildings and they can buy into a parking garage or buy into a place where parking is, buy into a way of, of dealing with their stormwater, you know, I think something like that is workable. But I don't think the general taxpayers should be subsidizing building, or buildings that, that can't provide for their basic parking and their, their water. Thank you.
Thank you. Me?
So I think I had a lot of conversations with staff about language. What is, what actually is Old Town and why, right? What do we want it to be in the future? Okay. Well, if we want to cut out cross-through traffic, then obviously we want it to be a destination because we want people to come and stay and eat and enjoy our town, right? And this is the core of our town, so we want it to be our historic base. We want it to feel like their hometown that they think they should have had, but they're disappearing everywhere as ours is disappearing. So that feel, that tone doesn't exist in any of our information, so you cannot, citywide, right? We just evict the reason why and the humanness of it all. In this plan, we have also evicted any of the city-owned properties and their share of what they should be. Memorial Field, man, it's sitting there empty most of the time as a blank space. Why are there not shops or pop-ups around that or restaurants that could interface or cross paths and plantings to make it lively and to be? So until we start calling it the destination and the historic destination and the core of our town and how do we draw the liveliness of our community and others to this area, we are not going to get what we would like to see, right? And so our language is implementation. Our soul is missing, right? All through town. This is just a microcosm that you guys grabbed onto. So glory be, yay! At the same time, we do have to protect it in a timely manner. So I don't think the codes that they're giving are going to inhibit that. I don't think they are preventing that from happening. So it's sort of a different, almost a, a marketing identity of town conversation. Stacy doesn't agree with me, but what is missing is, is the inclusion of all of the land, the city land, the private land, and, and how it's all packaged together for the future. So specifically for height, keep it lower, that's what people want. Try to keep the historical integrity. The redevelopment, you know what? Use what we have, make it better. You don't need to mow it all down and put up a modern structure on Front Street to change the feel of it all. Sunset Way should have retail because that will invigorate it. Second, unless you are going to also include retail down second, not second, well, down front two seconds, and you just slow traffic all the way down and you have our town be, wow, we have blocks and blocks and blocks of places to go instead of, wow, we're going to drive through this booger as fast as we possibly can. Okay? Now we're getting somewhere, all right? There's my concept for the seat.
Thank you.
So I kind of liked the ending tone of this conversation from the council members here that kind of see it, be looked at as what do we want this historical Old Town to be rather than, my perception has been, how do we make it more like the Central Issaquah plan and how do we get more density and how do we get all that? So I'm, I'm glad to hear that. I think it was Joni Mitchell, 1970, yellow taxi lyrics talk about, we don't know what we've got until it's gone, paid parking lot, paid paradise, put up parking lot. And that's kind of the feeling I've had. I think the PPC got asked the wrong question, what should the boundary be? I think it should include Old Ten so that we lower the density, so we preserve and ensure that we keep places like the XXX and the Grange and the Booms Candy from being redeveloped as, as property values increase. That's going to only increase more and put pressure on them to be sold out. The E in Old Town, again, this is a destination. It's not something, just a geographic area. It's where we want to go, where we want to be. It's, it's get used. It seems to me the E, Old got used as we have to redevelop it and make it better, stronger, faster. That's not what it's supposed to be. I'm one of those who would like to keep it at two stories rather than three stories. I, but also, we had a number of old trees that were removed from Front Street recently and now we talked about having a little greenery in place of the density. That seems to be going the wrong direction to me, to lose what we've got. We haven't even talked about replacing what we have, let alone what we're going to get. So I just fear that we're losing what we have and we're not treasuring it. I would also like to see lots not be included or not being combined. Maybe there could be some coding that talks about cottage housing or mobile housing that might allow some of that to happen. But generally, I'd like to see the, the one-house, one-lot per style. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call. Okay. Thank you very much. Last item on the agenda, central area dashboard.
So just to start off in summary, if that's okay. We met in May, on May the 4th was the last time we talked about this. You had some edits that I needed to make, some additions that you wanted to see. Of those, all have been made except for one. Do you want to talk about that?
Yes.
Okay. Do you want to go through the dashboard too?
I thought you said, do we want to talk about the one that hasn't been made? That's what I thought you asked.
Do you want me to pull up the dashboard while we talk about it?
Please.
Okay. And please feel free to, to start if you want to. Or I can introduce the topic if you'd like.
Well, we just pull up the dashboard so we can remind everybody what it is.
Hmm. Okay. HTML. What did Dave do here? I don't know what he did either. Sorry, I'm not trying to make you sick. I don't know how it went. Dave pushed a button and I don't know what he pushed. Try and take it back.
Avantage, do you...
Yeah.
You can go through, run through quickly the changes that were made.
It's not, well, this is the HTML. Sometimes PDFs take just a second to, the attachments take a second to pop up. Do you see the...
Did you work with a computer?
I just had this experience maybe 30 minutes ago, so that's the only reason I'm...
What time is it?
It's still thinking.
There are Kansas?
Okay. So you can watch the thing spin. I'm sorry. It, I, I opened a new tab and it, it should pop up in a moment. Yay. All right. So would you like me to go to the, to go through the corrections that I made thus far? Okay. So on page two, I believe it was Councilmember Winterstein asked to kind of tweak these charts to make them a little more readable where there wasn't as much blank space. So I did that. On page three, and I won't zoom too fast through this, I don't want to make anybody sick. I added a TCO note for the Atlas units for the residential piece here. So the new footnote is here about the 99 units in Atlas that were granted TCO. That was a little more clear about, people were living there, but why? Yep. Page, the next page, we kind of re-tabulated how we represented the average FAR, floor area ratio. We included Raleigh. And I did add a footnote there that talks about Raleigh being developed under a development agreement. And then page five should have had additional information added to it. This page is the page that does not have the additional information that was requested. Councilmember Goodman did ask for information about impact fees that were collected from 2013 to 2016 and where those impact fees had been spent in the city, what projects they had been spent on.
And I believe that's an accounting that's required by state law. And I asked a couple months ago, so what's the status of that?
So we have three directors who are currently, I have to include Keith as well, are currently working to highlight that information and, and get it. I, I'm not privy to the, I guess, the, the format of the new systems and, and I know we have a new finance director as well on board, so.
So there's, there's three pieces of this puzzle, right? There's, there's, what have we taken in with development? So Development Services has to provide that information.
Yep.
We've done that. And then there's, where has the money been spent? So that is, right now, what we're still chasing. And so Public Works Engineering and Finance is working on that part of this puzzle, but clarity has not been granted as yet.
Because...
So, there's, there's three pieces of this puzzle, right? There's, there's, what have we taken in with development? So, Development Services has to provide that information.
Yep.
We've done that. And then there's where has the money been spent? So, that is right now what we're still chasing. And so, Public Works Engineering and Finance is working on that part of this puzzle, but clarity has not been granted as yet.
Because we must keep that accounting, not just because we're required to, but because it actually was discussed at budget. And every year we're told that we have amounts of monies that need to be spent because we took them in X number of years ago and we need to spend them, so. I'm a little, yeah, so I'm a little, I'm a little curious slash concerned about why it's taken so long, but I realize that you're not the keepers of the information.
So, we don't have another land and shore meeting next week, do we?
I think so.
We do.
So.
What, we do?
No.
July, July 6.
The next one's July.
Okay, I'm like, what?
So, so our hope is that we're going to be able to get you that information for the next committee meeting, which is hopefully not next week.
We are, we are in constant communication, so we are, we are working really hard to try and get you that information.
Thank you, I know. I just have to complain about it. But I did complain to you.
So, to kind of complete the roll through the document, we did take out the Park in Reva per Councilmember Polly's request and I put a note in there that. No, 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 just.
Not there.
You, you requested that the facts be shown on the plan. Yeah, right, sorry about that.
Out that park.
So, we added that footnote to the map and described why it, why it was no longer in the plan. Page eight, we corrected, I had, I had a little correction on the housing chart. It was just a, the year was 2015, I changed it to 2016. Page nine and 10 did have, did not have any changes. Again, I won't scroll too fast, I don't want to make anybody sick.
Can I ask you a question? Oh, no, no, to each other, okay, I'll wait, I'll come, I have a question on page 10.
Okay. Okay. Well, the last change was on page 11 and it corresponded to another change we made in the document, oh, excuse me, that we just made sure that the FAR included the Raleigh DA. So, and it's all Central Issaquah, so we've got consistent average FARs that we're comparing through the document. And then we can go back to page 10 for Councilmember Polly.
That six-letter word.
So, where'd the 2,500 come? And you know what? Take it away and come back and talk about it more later?
So, just make a note to yourself next time you have to do the dashboard that those targets have positions associated with them.
Right, right, and I, I thought they were also being part of a, potentially a bigger policy discussion as well.
Maybe.
Yeah, potentially. Okay, well, I will make sure to note them as, I, well, yes, that's sensitive, we'll, we'll be creative, but.
Just to make sure everybody hears what we do with this, what happens to the dashboard? So, in a couple sentences, what is it and what do we do with it?
So, the dashboard is a reflection of the development activity that's been happening in Central Issaquah since it started. The, what we're going to do with it is, once we have this last little piece, we're going to update it, the monitoring report with that last little piece that we just talked about and post both the dashboard and the monitoring report to our website. And previous dashboards and monitoring reports are in existence on our website now, so this would just be in addition to those.
Great. Sure. I love the dashboard. Just because my little brain can, does so much better with graphs and numbers, but it also, there's just such a huge story that's told with just this little amount of information. And I do like the annual monitoring report too, but I get so much out of the dashboard. It's hugely helpful as a policy person.
I have nothing to add.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And we have one last item on the agenda. Wasn't there like special calendars? It says special meeting request.
Yeah, you guys were supposed to bring your calendars so we could talk about more land and shore meetings.
So, perhaps what we should do is.
But not next week.
I thought we already did that with.
This is for a different topic.
So, that it took so long to get the one scheduled for June and July? There's going to be more after June and July?
We're on vacation in August.
I know, August is out, but like September, October?
So, the, the request was for additional meetings for the end of development agreements for October the 25th and, oh, November the 9th. And the moratorium calendar that we provided you, what I tried to do was add all of these meetings that we have. It's, it's a working document because we're going to have more outreach meetings, but we want to make sure that, that you understand the availability and everything else too as best you can, so hopefully it's a tool.
I guess you'll just have to send out.
A request.
Meeting request.
But it's good that they were announced tonight so that the public knows that.
Yes.
They see stuff all year long.
Yes.
And that we know.
And once we, once we make them officially okay for y'all, we'll go ahead and post them on the website so that they're on the official calendar online. I mean, the, the, okay.
What was the other land and shore meeting date?
November 9th.
Okay.
October 25th and November 9th.
Yeah, they actually show up on our calendar as tentative, Alanis.
Yep.
Okay.
And they're purple. They're the purple ones.
But that, that was, that was the latest additional meeting request.
Okay. Anything else?
No.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Re-adjourn.